Speaker.
I'm going to repeat that. I'm calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Monterey Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And we have roll call, please.
Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield has not joined yet, but if he, if and when he does, I will mark his time when he does arrive. Commissioner Dawson?
Here.
Commissioner Freeman?
Here.
Commissioner Latassa?
Here.
Great. So as of now, we have a total of five members present out of our six total. And for staff, we have Community Development Director Cole, Principal Planner Rovere, Senior Associate Planner, Associate Planner Sabdo, Associate Planner Bugger, and Recording Secretary Cleary. And that is all of the staff present today.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which there are two items. That are the first one is item number two, which is consider providing input on upgrades to the use permit, public handout, and the zoning text or map amendment, public handout. This is not a project under CEQA. And the second, or the second item is item number three, the minutes for October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there anyone on the commission here or in the audience that would like to pull one of these items for discussion?
No.
Okay. Then can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I do have some corrections to the minutes.
What kind of corrections are they?
Well, I did not attend the commission, so it's all related to that. I didn't, I didn't attend the October twenty-fifth hearing.
Okay.
So if staff's ready on page six of the minutes, on item number six, I should be shown as absent, not I. And then on page nine of the minutes, I, on item number seven, I should be shown as absent, not abstain. And then on page eleven, on item number eight, I should be shown also as absent, not abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted. So, and I have.
Those changes, I move approval of the consent agenda items.
Here, we have a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. And just to clarify, is this for just the minutes or the whole consent agenda?
Oh, consent agenda.
Okay, perfect. For the roll call vote, we have Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield is in the meeting. Now, he should be able to accept the promotion to a panelist. Commissioner Brassfield, can you confirm for the record that you are present?
Is new.
But I did not hear the minutes.
Okay, then we will just ask that you abstain from items, the minutes, as well as the submittal checklist.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I will mark you as an extension. Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
So I have a question. Sorry to be such a stickler. Since I wasn't here for the October twenty-fifth meeting, am I supposed to abstain from voting on those minutes?
No, you can still vote for the minutes.
Yes. It's my vote.
Okay, so that whole consent agenda is approved with a vote of five.
And one abstention, which is Commissioner Brassfield.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, the public may speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject which is within the jurisdiction of the Montreal Planning Commission and which is not on the agenda this afternoon. Do we have anybody from the audience who are online?
We do have members of the public online already. And in case anyone else wants to join, I can go ahead and let them know. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/citymonterey with a ten-second delay and Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to a ninety-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isarchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, toll-free. Once again, that phone number is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, and it is toll-free. Then enter the webinar ID, one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once again, this webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen, or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off the TV or computer speakers or go into another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, so please stay within that limit. And I, I see no hands online raised or in the chambers.
All right. Well, then we'll move on to our regular agenda, the public hearing portion of item number four, which is consider recommending the resolution to the city council establishing objective design standards for the downtown and lighthouse-specific plans and amending the plans to clarify visitor accommodation facility district requirements, adding massage establishment requirements and definition and sorry, I lost my place. Okay, adding marker space use classification and definition, clarifying residential minor and major first floor, four units or more requirements, adding new subdivision minimum lot size and width requirements, updating streetscape lighting requirements, and amending the utility major definition to include water facilities. This is an example from CEQA. And are we ready for staff report? Fernando?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Fernando Rovere, Principal Planner for the City of Monterey. This presentation is a brief version of the previous one that I gave on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. And it's short because we would like to allow time for discussion among you and the public.
Okay.
So the need for objective design standards is because the City of Monterey did not meet its regional housing needs allocation numbers. And because of that, the city is required to provide us, to provide a streamlined review and approval process of certain multifamily housing projects with an affordability component. And this was mandated by Senate Bill thirty-five. Only development slash design standards that are objective can be applied to these streamlined projects. The definition of objective design standards are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. And so the objective design standards that were prepared, the goal was that they were understandable by anyone who can, who reads them and that there were no questions asked on the parameters. And this was difficult to, to come up with in some cases. On November eighth, the, during the Planning Commission meeting, there were public comments received that addressed several lighthouse-specific plan objective design standards and also the maker space kilowatt and horsepower limits. Staff made changes to address some of these comments and made other additional changes as well that I will present to you. In attachment one, which is the resolution, staff eliminated the kilowatt restriction on the maker space use classification because staff received public comments about kiln sizes and kiln kilowatts that it didn't make sense to place a restriction on the kiln kilowatts because for commercial production, sometimes bigger kilns are required and we didn't see that a limit was necessary because a kiln doesn't necessarily pose external impacts outside of the building. So that's why that was eliminated. And then a noise study would be required for equipment exceeding two horsepower because we felt that that needed to stay because the, the equipment that works on horsepower could pose some noise concerns. So a noise study is required for equipment exceeding two horse. There were changes made to the streetscape lighting in order to clarify some things. The historic Alvarado decorative light is required in the Alvarado Heritage and Island of Adobes district, but it was made optional elsewhere. And the specific plan currently requires crook neck and cobra contemporary lights in some areas of the city, of the downtown. But changes were made to no longer require them and instead allow more flexibility in using either one of those types where appropriate. And this was a request by our Public Works Department to have the flexibility to change streetlights where necessary, but also use existing poles to save the city some expense. And then attachment one, resolution exhibits A and B, which are the downtown and lighthouse objective standards. There were some changes made to that based on the public comments received. One of the clarifications was that only building corners at intersection, at street intersections shall include doorways, windows, or other architectural features because previously it didn't have the at-street-intersections wording. So it, it could have been understood that every building corner needed to have a doorway or window, even if it was mid-block. So that, that's why that at-street-intersections wording was added. Also clarified that the variation in architectural detailing parapita materials for frontages exceeding a hundred feet. That was put there to break, for the goal of breaking up the massing of the building. So that's why the to-break-up-massing was added. Also, it used to say fifty feet and it was changed to say for building frontages exceeding a hundred feet. And a minimum of thirty-five percent of the linear feet of each building non-residential ground floor shall consist of doors and windows. This, this was changed, used to say fifty percent. It was changed to thirty-five percent to give more flexibility in a building design for frontages that did not really, that their business model did not need as much window as mu, as much window square footage.
Quick question before you go to the next one. If you would go back to this first bullet, clarified that only building corners at street intersections shall include doorways, windows, or other architectural features. So let's say you have a building that has a driveway and it's in the middle of the block. So obviously, there's a corner there on both sides of the driveway. So they would not be required to have a window, a door, or a feature. It could just be a brick corner or a stucco corner. Is that correct?
Yeah, as proposed, if the building is mid-block, even if it has a driveway, it would not be required to have a, a corner feature like a doorway or.
Thank you.
And then, oh, one of the other changes based on the public comments was this is similar to the previous window requirements that provide a minimum of thirty-five percent of the building's first floor length and height with transparent windows. And similarly, provide minimum fifteen percent of the building's above-first-floor length and height with transparent windows. This, these were reduced, as you can see, from fifty to thirty-five and from twenty-five to fifteen to allow again for more flexibility in the building design and the interior, interior room layouts. Another change that was pointed out was that the previous packet included a mistake of with the landscaping list. And so that was corrected to, to be consistent with the landscaping list of the lighthouse-specific plan. And these are some staff responses to the public comments that were received at the last meeting. There have been several more comments received up to today. So this is just one that was received with enough time for staff to provide feedback. And this is from Ms. Sharon Dwight. I just want to go briefly over them. So there is an entire section called open space in the lighthouse-specific plan objective design standards. And and we can discuss that further if necessary. Also, a lot of these guidelines that were converted into standards were very difficult to make it objective. And so staff did the best job they could. And for example, the word take advantage is very subjective. And so we address that by requiring above-ground floor units to provide a minimum, minimum fifty square feet of open space to take advantage of those views. Also, multifamily entrances may be set back. And that's also a subjective, you know, wording. So we had to change that to say, how much do we want? How much do we want that to be set back? We said a maximum of fifty percent. Only to accommodate resist entry outdoor seating or landscaping. In order to provide that interest to this interested pedestrian experience. I also summarized these in this agenda report, but I just wanted to point out. That. We couldn't keep all of the guidelines in the specific plan. This shows that the percentages of windows was reduced. We courtyards have many definitions, so. We needed to define them some way, so that's why we included. That at least one for four foot long bench per two residential units was required. Just to try to come up with some parameters of what a courtyard would look like. We did change the twelve foot setback that was in the lighthouse specific plan to seven feet. Because. In order, this was an opportunity to reduce setbacks to increase the number of housing units. That can be built on a site. It was it was discussed by the planning commission. Maybe. Two years ago or more. And no decision was made, but it sounded like seven feet was a good medium. And so staff is bringing this back for your consideration. Then here's the one about building corners at at street intersections. We didn't know how to define an entrance plaza, so we said. In one of the guidelines was, you know, that planters were acceptable, so we. Required a planter at every street corner as an opportunity to beautify corners. And. This is the one that. Building facades must be divided into equal proportions for frontages, and then we we said exceeding a hundred feet. In order to leave flexibility in the design, because if we ask a. A designer to break up the building into fifty feet chunks. That could become. Too much change in one in a short distance and could compromise the overall design. There was a question raised about ten foot retaining wall. There are very large retaining walls already in the lighthouse specific plan area. One example is. On re side between lighthouse and Hawthorne. Order for the building to be level with the street with the sidewalk on lighthouse. There was a lot of grading that happened for the to accommodate a parking lot in the back. And that required a very tall retaining wall to be placed. So these are some of the examples that. This is why the standard was written this way because. In order to have a building. Be at the street level, which is, I think, what. What we would want as a pedestrian, some grading would be required. And one note about the horsepower. Any use is required to comply with the noise standards in the zoning ordinance. So for commercial uses. There is a standard of sixty five decibels. So this would still be applied to any use. And the way that it's noise is required to be measured is it's measured at the property line. So we would have if someone is proposing a horsepower greater than two, they would submit a noise study. At the maybe front property line. So they would measure the noise at the sidewalk to see what a pedestrian would experience. And then there was a question about water wells. Water wells could be a water supply solution to water constrained lots. And there are wells in the city, but we have not received complaints about wells creating noise. There was also a concern about massage establishments being located on Lighthouse Avenue. And the reason that they were not limited in number is that. Lighthouse and foam are a lot a lot longer than Alvarado Street, and so. Currently, there is less concern for a concentration of massage establishment. Obviously, if that changes, we can bring this back, but it's our recommendation that. We do not limit the amount of massage establishments on lighthouses and foam. And. Staff believes that in order to allow more housing to be built, parking shouldn't be. Hopefully a limiting factor, so that's why we allowed. If a parking space is located more than a half mile from the house or from the housing unit. That the planning commission could approve that. In order to. Make that housing unit buildable. And there were additional comments received today and and last week as well. But staff believes that the proposed standards do the best at keeping the neighborhood character. And creating compatibility with our street infrastructure. Without precluding construction of eligible multifamily housing project. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission. Recommend that the city council adopt a resolution establishing these amendments and objective standards. I'm available for questions and. Our attorney who helped us come up with these objective standards, Adam Lindgren is on the line. But he wasn't able to join as a panelist, so Jennifer, he's a member of the public at the meeting.
I have already promoted him, so you should.
Good evening, everyone.
That's Adam.
Howdy.
So he's available for questions as well. Do you have any questions about the wording of the standards?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And can I just make one general comment? You know, this is basically a reversal of our approach in the past. We adopted the specific plans to. Provide a lot of flexibility. And a lot of discretion by our architectural review committee and the planning commission through the process. And I think the commission is well aware of this, but I also want to state this for the public. There is a series of. Significant state laws that have been adopted that are. No longer in favor of this approach because the city of Monterey has not constructed. The amount of housing as designated through the regional housing needs assessment. And you'll be talking about our housing element later. This evening. This the the state has basically told cities that they can't have that discretion over their projects anymore, and they're requiring. Development of checklists that are clear to developers on how they get their projects approved. And so this is a pretty significant change. It's not exactly like, but it's similar to accessory dwelling units. I think we're on our fourth or fifth. Change to state law. We'll be presenting another one this evening. And that becomes effective. It no matter what we do, it becomes effective January first, so we are. Our goal is to be compliant with state law, which is moving towards more of. Checklists and those types of things for specific types of applications.
Okay, uh, thank you. Questions from commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have some questions. So thanks a lot, Fernando. I did listen to the November, November eighth. Hearing and I'm very impressed. This is really complicated document and. It's the state's not giving us a lot of time, so good work. So my my, just a couple of procedural questions. The if we want to tweak this checklist in the future. I mean, let's say we eventually we will have applicants who are complying with the checklist. And we'll probably have some, you know, some changes needed in the future. How easy will it be? To change this checklist in the future?
So Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, but specific plans amendments require. Planning Commission and City Council approval, but the these checklists were made as individual document, not. Not inside the specific plans. So in the future, we could amendment amend them. Separately from a specific plan amendment.
Okay, good, because it'll need, you know, it's gonna it's almost like an organic document. It's gonna have to be adaptable in the future. Especially the way the state is changing the rules on us.
But Fernando, can you. Between the objective design standards, which are in the specific plan versus the submittal checklist?
Oh, okay.
And also Adam had his hand up.
Okay, Terry, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the standards themselves, which are exhibit A and B.
Well, really, it's it's both. It's it's the standards and the checklist, you know, I just. You know, some some parts of the zoning are troublesome to change. And others are easier. I wonder how how changeable this these two documents will be. The 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 standards and the checklist.
Though, yeah, those two are separate from the specific plan itself, so. We could come back and amend it without a specific plan change.
Okay, okay.
And how would those amendments be initiated from a concerned planning commissioner, or would it? Come from staff saying this isn't working? We need to take another look at it?
It could come from either one.
And then Adam.
Yeah, did Adam need want to add something?
Sure, yeah, I agree with everything Fernando said and I, but I would add that. As a checklist, as with with other checklists. I think you would want to change it after. You after a project is completed, you wouldn't you and you've learned from the example of the project. You would want to change it so that those changes would apply to future projects. You wouldn't be able to receive an application completed. And then decide that you wanted to change the checklist as it applied to that particular project and send it back to them. So you I think you certainly could learn from and and, you know, we we can help. You evolve the checklist over time.
And thanks, Adam, and I forgot to. Say something. The the middle checklist, which is attachment two of your packet. That is just an attachment for you to see the process of a streamlined SB thirty five review. But that's not something that you're adopting today. Because we want the flexibility of changing that submittal checklist at the staff level.
So thank you. One other question about the process. The so let's say that an applicant complies with the checklist. In staff's opinion, except for one item, let's say the. They need a twelve foot retaining wall to make the whole thing work. And everything else complies. What's the process? Is it what do they? What does the applicant do at that point if if they have a project that's? Almost there, but but not, you know, it's just one item short. Is it a variance or what do they do?
So my understanding is is that if. A project cannot comply with a objective standard that it cannot be reviewed. Under that streamlined review process.
So it'd have to go to a public hearing.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So it may not be a public hearing because it might be a public appearance item at either the architectural review committee. Or most likely that's where it would happen. So. What we have to do is establish objective design standards. If it meets all of that, we'll check it and they will go straight and get their building permit.
So it may be handled kind of like a variation. Sometimes ARC considers variations. I think that's the term.
Yeah, so it'll be different. It'll just be under normal review. So SB thirty five requires a streamlined review. You're getting. You don't have to undergo public review, so if they can't meet that checklist. Then it will undergo the normal process. The other major issue under SB thirty five. If I remember correctly, the projects have to be prevailing wage to qualify. So as currently. Written, we think there's only a handful of developments that'll actually use this checklist. For example, affordable housing developers that are pursuing federal funds that are prevailing wage. Will most likely use this checklist. Most of our private developments. I don't believe. Prevailing wage projects because it increases the project costs more between thirty to forty percent.
So thank you. I do have other questions, but I'm going to hold off on those.
Okay.
Because they're like very specific.
Okay, other commissioners' questions?
I have one procedural question. First of all, I thought it was a very good idea. For you to separate the downtown and the lighthouse specific plans because while there's a lot of commonality. There are some very specific things for each one of those that apply to the district. We must do something tonight because we need to pass. Or this proposal in order to meet the January first deadline. Is that correct?
Well, there is this SB thirty five passed in two thousand eighteen. And so we've been, we've been lucky that we have not received an application and during this time.
January first deadline I was referring to is the new ADU law that was signed in September. And I was trying to give you an example that there's a series of state laws that have been adopted. So if we received, if we had received or we receive an SB thirty five project. We will have no review at all or checklist. They will just go straight to the building department. So how vulnerable are the I'm only aware of one SB thirty five project that's currently being considered by an applicant.
So put it another way, it's to our advantage to get something together as quickly as possible, given the amount of research. That has been done and the detail that has been applied to these two things. Yeah, okay.
Okay, commissioners online, any comments, questions? You're muted. There you go.
I agree with you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. On the make space issue. As I understand it. There's a lot of garages in the city of Monterey that have table saws, chop saws, et cetera. So if they want to be used on a commercial basis. Then they would have to abide by these rules. But if we on a weekend project. On an amateur basis. If we start using table saws, chop saws, and silver. Are they going to be held to the same standards?
No, the. This only applies to the downtown and lighthouse specific plans. We're creating a new maker space definition. And these are small startup businesses that. You know, they want to make stuff. In the downtown or lighthouse and and then sell it or maybe have an instructional component to it. And they there's they sustain themselves through the sales, so they. Will make their hope is to make a lot of. Product in order to sell. And so. That's why we think that they're going to use bigger equipment that than someone at home would. So that's why we place those restrictions on the horsepower and but as an educational point. The zoning, the noise standards apply citywide, so if someone at home would. Use a table saw in their garage, they still have to make. Stay below the decibels for residential zone.
And just to briefly remind the commission, where did we come up with this concept of maker space? We see more and more businesses proposing. This type of approach on Lighthouse Avenue specifically. It started out with the leather shop where you have somebody. And I think you probably are all familiar with the leather shop where they're pounding leather and making purses. And I think you probably are all familiar with the leather shop where they're pounding leather and making purses. And they wanted to have classes for people, small scale. Um, and that's just continued. Um, we're seeing more and more, and I think nationally, you're seeing this concept of maker spaces as well. And so we thought, well, why not streamline that for these businesses? Because we've been struggling with them. Well, you know, how much onsite manufacture you, manufacturing are you doing? It's very small scale. So we wanted to streamline that approach in those districts, because it seems like a really good fit.
Well, Kim, is, in that case is, that's light industrial, isn't it?
No, what we're saying is we're creating a new definition called maker space. So with these really small mom and pop businesses that are trying to open on Lighthouse Avenue. Have a really, they, they do very small production, they do. Leather making there, they may do woodworking. Um, and so what we're trying to do is streamline that so that. I'll, I mean, they they tend to, you know, try to live above the unit or live above upstairs, and then they rent. The lower level and have a small maker space, and so we're trying to streamline that review.
Well, thank you. Uh, for Fernanda, did we not, in this material that came in? Address a problem with the the fence requirements on front, frontage of the lot?
So um, staff's response to that is. Um, we placed the maximum height, fence height limit of six feet. Um, in both the downtown and lighthouse areas. Um, because these are primarily. Especially on lighthouse, these are primarily commercial areas and. You know, sometimes a four foot fence is not gonna cut it for privacy or other concerns in a commercial area. Um, for example, um. The police station right here on Madison and Pas- Pacific. They uh, wanted to install a six foot fence for security reasons. Even though, you know, there are houses all along Pacific Street, it it could be considered a residential area, but we do have this. Police station that's not residential, that really needs that six foot tall fence. So that's why we went with a maximum of six feet to allow that. To go up to that height for privacy.
In all directions, front, side, back, okay.
And we have another example that was recently approved, the Monterey Bay Aquarium purchased a lot. On, I believe it's um, Foam Street where the old Hodges rental is. And they plan to store their boats in that lot. And there is a six foot fence that has been approved for that corner because for security reasons of their equipment. We don't anticipate a lot of businesses installing a six foot fence across the front of their. Um, properties, but we didn't really want to prohibit it either, because there are sites as you drive around town in those commercial areas. Where six feet might make sense, and we didn't think it was that big of risk. To allow that, because we do have examples of where it's really appropriate.
So this wouldn't be in, just an entryway, it would be for a reason of security or some other reason?
It would, yes, it it would. Most people, I think, put up fences for security, but. Uh, maybe to to define the property as well. Um, but we don't, we don't, we don't see that on Lighthouse Avenue. A lot anyway. Um, that's why we didn't think that this standard would um, create any issues.
But Commissioner Brassfield, are you asking, they have to prove there's a security issue in order to install a six foot fence across the front property line? And the answer is no, that would be too subjective. Um, so the, you know, there is a little bit, I mean, is there risk to the city by allowing six foot fences? Maybe, um, but I don't think, it seems to make sense to provide the flexibility. So we can have those installed versus if it says a maximum of four feet, sorry, police station. That we just ends, uh, you know, you can't install that safety gate, and that's restrictive.
You mentioned four feet, six feet, and also privacy, Mike. So just security, it's privacy, it's privacy.
Yeah, when I look, when I look down on El Dorado, we have a large space in the middle of the block, it was a fence out front. And I understand that, it just. Trying to things into, more technical or specific. And it, it doesn't leave us much room for what we pride to accommodate in the past. That's, that's what I'm getting at. Okay, my next question is, um, courtyards. Trying to be specific. A bench. We're not saying what the bypass space is on that bench. Wouldn't it be better to put a minimum square footage?
A minimum square footage on the bench?
No, on the space, on a courtyard space.
We.
Because if you put a bench in there and there's no way to get past it, then it's not a courtyard.
Think about ADA.
Um, we, oh, we tried to address, um. We tried to address the, the um, size of open spaces by requiring a minimum of. So for new buildings with a residential co- component. The amount of common open space that must be provided shall be five percent of the project site square footage. No horizontal dimension shall be less than ten feet. So we were hoping that the size would be addressed by that standard.
Do the architect think that five percent is a good figure, a good number?
Um, I don't know, I, I'd have to, I'd have to listen exactly to the language, I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, because you say a four foot bench. How wide is that bench? It's four foot long, we understand that, but how wide is it? And and is it gonna be ADA comifiable on both sides or one side? Yeah, that's my point, is that we're, we're trying to define a space here without putting any. Really qualifiers as to what that means.
I think the other reason we required benches is. We wanted the space to be usable, we didn't just want there to be. Maybe a paved courtyard with nothing to sit on. Um, it, this was just our attempt at defining the space a little bit, and. It does have to, anything that um, gets built has to meet ADA requirements anyway. So that's, that's a given.
That's, I I have just a a problem with trying to define that space with that definition. In my mind, it it needs to be more more specific.
That's the problem.
Okay, any other question?
No.
I do have uh, some other specific questions.
Specific questions?
Yeah, okay, so um. So on exhibit A on page four, Fernanda. Um, the second item. So each residential unit above the ground floor shall have fifty uh, square feet minimum open space. Uh, so are, what about ground floor units? Or do we not have ground floor units? Is that what's going on?
We, they, they are allowed. Um, that was approved. Was it this year or last year? The, there were, ground floor units were approved on lighthouse. In the lighthouse specific plan, but there were some. Intersections that were excluded. Um. But we did not require open space for ground floor units, because we were hoping that. Um, the commercial spaces would front the street, so that that's what you saw first, um, when you walked up to a building.
Right.
And then. That I don't know how much room would be left for a residential unit to have open space on a ground floor.
Okay, yeah, that, that, that explains it then. So it's really uh, an upper level um, deck requirement. Uh, okay, is there other parts of the zoning ordinance that require decks for multifamily, I think?
Yeah.
Or blockades.
Yeah, not for mixed use currently, so for mixed use. But we see most projects do propose second and third story decks um, in the lighthouse area. I can think of our newer projects, they tend to have that, but there's not a requirement that they have it.
So then on uh, exhibit A, page five, uh, this.
Second page five or?
Well, no, this is exhibit A. Um, page five, the parking standards. So my question is, uh, there, obviously, there are, um. The municipal code requires parking um. In this, in both these areas. Yes, and they're usually based on the number of bedrooms in the unit, I think.
Not any, not in the specific plan area, so we took. The um, we changed when we did the specific plans.
Okay, so we already changed that.
Yeah, and for mixed use, it was all, it was already a minimum of one space per unit, and then um. At one point, the city changed its regulations when it was C two zone to allow more than one. If there were more bedrooms. And that, I can think of that was instituted on one project, but when the city adopted the specific plan, we adopted. New parking requirements based on a parking and transportation study.
Okay, okay.
For each of the areas.
But like multifamily in the R three zones.
Are based on bedrooms, yes.
Still have have a different requirement, that's just something that's a little bit inconsistent in the. In the.
Well, I think it's, well, I think it's, I don't know whether I'd describe it as inconsistent or reflective of the different area that they're located.
Okay, that's true, the mixed use has has a different kind of a.
And you have to remember, we have bus service.
Yeah.
Down Lighthouse through the downtown and North Fremont Street. And the idea along those corridors was to densify housing, like to make those our infill housing areas. That were supported by alternative forms of transportation.
Okay, then uh, page six and seven of exhibit A. Has uh, you know, suggested shapes of roofs, uh, you know, flat shed, hip, gable. I mean, it's funny, because one of the pictures is of the lighthouse. Building, whatever that's called, with, which has a dome, so i- is this uh? I- is this too exclusive there? What about domes and vaulted and rounded shapes? Are they, would they not be permitted?
So we put um, these examples of flat gable shed and hip. Um. You know, these were for the primary building that. And then that dome or, um. I believe we put that photo in the standard that required a. Architectural feature at building corners.
Okay.
So that dome would be considered an architectural feature and not really part of the main building roof.
Right, so, oh, I see, so you're um. I mean, for instance, what if an applicant wanted to come in with a modern design? And it had some sort of a vaulted, rounded roof, would that be allowed, or is that prohibited under these um?
No, not, if the, if the building would have. A rounded roof, then that would not be allowed.
Okay, is that what we want to do, or?
You could move it to Barcelona.
So, so this is, this is a really good, it it was really helpful that, you know, that you're an architect and you under, you know. One of the challenges we had was. Well, if we're going to regulate roofs, or we're going to, what types of roofs do we want? And so, you know, Fernanda and I were brainstorming, how do you specify that so it's objective? So we sort of came up with the main types. And, you know. In the old days, a barrel roof or, you know, something really creative might have been fun, but it won't be subject to SB thirty five streamlining. Unless you want us to change if your direction is to add a barrel roof.
Yeah.
Because it has to be a checklist.
Sure, so so my fear is that in in the expediency of getting this thing done. We're creating these sort of um, you know, regulations that exclude some architectural.
They absolutely do exclude certain.
Wasn't intentional, it's just more expediting. Okay, I just wanted to open up that issue, so uh, just a few more. Uh, page ten also appears to not include metal materials on walls. Um, and that, that again would be an exclusion for, you know, modern kinds of contemporary architecture. Uh, so it's just opening it up to the commission. Um, the half, half mile um. Thing for um. Uh, well, remind me, what is the half mile uh, rule related to Fernanda?
Parking.
Yeah, I'll.
Parking.
Let me find it, because. I'll read it.
Yeah.
Word by.
So the basic idea, and this is in the lighthouse specific plan, you could provide parking on site.
Yes.
And then the plan also said that if um, parking's within, I believe, a half mile of the site. And you have a shared parking agreement or something, that that would also be acceptable.
Okay, so uh, the the red flag that goes up for me, because I don't do a lot of ADU, I I think Dan probably does, but. Aren't there some rules about the proximity of parking to the unit for ADU? You could be half, have a half mile away parking in your wheelchair and just have to take your way down?
As I know.
It's ADA.
Yeah, ADA, um, okay, so that's, I I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, there was someplace else, I can't find it, where there was a reference to uh, um. Over ten unit situation. Then you have to have a certain number of uh, affordable uh, units. Am I confusing things? Is that a different document, or is that?
Um, that's, you know, we, we have an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires. Uh, twenty percent affordability for projects of six or more units.
Six or four.
So we are more restrictive, the, that ten. The one that you read about ten units, now that's would apply for jurisdictions that don't have something more restrictive.
Okay, oh, and that's clear, the way it's it's worded, because I know the numbers are are usually. The the threshold is usually five or six units.
Yeah, so remember, there's a difference between SB thirty five ac- applicability, which created this ten unit requirement. A lot of cities in California do not have inclusionary ordinances, ours is twenty percent over, I think, six units or more.
Right.
So, and you know, if they have, um, in this case, the SB thirty five. Baseline for streamlining is less than what our municipal code requires, but. It's still the threshold for SB thirty five streamlining, so that's why we put it in.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Terry. I think we can uh, open up to the public for.
Did Mike, uh, say something?
He said funny about, Mike, did you have anything to say?
I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that uh, commercial parking in in those zones, uh, you can have zero parking. But I think that's the way it was before.
So for lighthouse, there is a requirement of, but um, for a thousand square feet of commercial. There was a requirement, uh, let me see. And we didn't change that from the lighthouse specific plan.
Yeah, there is no requirement, minimum requirement in the Alvarado or in the downtown. But there's a minimum requirement in the lighthouse area.
Yeah, it's minimum of two spaces for one thousand square feet uh, in the lighthouse specific plan area.
Okay, no more questions, yes? All right. Um, we'll open it up to public comments.
Hello, I'm Sharon Dwight. Uh, I think you all got my second letter, and I'm gonna sprint through as fast as I can with this one. Uh, on page three of, everything I'm talking about is exhibit B. Okay, so on page three, uh, the first, the first standard that has to do with open space. I'm very concerned that we have departed from what was adopted. By adding outdoor seating, the bench, the four foot bench, and public art. We now bypass, I mean, if if somebody chooses those two options. One bench for every two units and a piece of public art, all of a sudden, they've met the open space standard. And we never had those in there before, so I think they ought to be excluded. Uh, it, it is totally bypassing what we were trying to do, which was to actually open. Space for people to get together, to socialize, to to meet and talk with each other. Uh, I also wondered about uh, D in that section, landscape yards. Except fronting Lighthouse Avenue would count as open space. Why are we making the exception? There are actually houses there that have open space in front of the building. It is open space, why would we not count that? I think it's a mistake to make that exception, unless I'm missing something. Uh, the next standard and the fourth one. The next standard and the fourth one. My understanding is when we say it's common open space, at least architecturally, we're talking about. Open space would serve the occupants of that building. What we asked for in this plan was that it be public open space. It's a very different thing. I think it ought to be a different word. I don't, I don't think. I don't think common expresses what it is we're trying to accomplish here. I noted that there is no reference at all to a resident and employee parking plan. That was an essential part of the lighthouse district. We really have a parking problem. And so there's no, it's not required on the checklist. It should be. The more than a half a mile, really, is, is too far. It's too far. Nobody's going to walk it. And since I'm running out of seconds. In order, we said that in order to qualify to have a third story building, we wanted it to be an exception. There were three requirements. It had to have a twelve foot setback. Because of the, the bulk and mass and the, and the whole wind tunnel effect, the whole thing. And public art and public open space. This is, we've eliminated two of the requirements. And changed it to, to seven feet. Twelve foot was what we all agreed on. This is a change of policy. This has nothing at all to do with an objective standard. I believe on page seven, the, where we've got the picture here at the bottom. At block corners, buildings shall contain entrance plazas. I think there should be a period. Start a new sentence and say it could be benches or, or planters. And go ahead and then give the standard for the planters. We should not have a planter at every single corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we should have Karen more time. She's done so much work here. On this, I mean, we, speaker for sure, but I'd like to see if.
Let me ask, Sharon, did you make your points?
I, I'd like to hear them. I don't know about the rest of the commission.
This is highly unlikely.
I'd like to hear.
Okay, Sharon, you're on.
Okay. On page nine, the plate height. Height is a real, a real issue in New Monterey. And by saying that it's a minimum plate height of ten feet, it's totally going against what we said we wanted to do. I believe the plate height should be a maximum of ten feet. That, that is more consistent with what we were saying. And then, as far as fences go, you have no standard about perimeter fences. I think you really need to look at that. It should be included. And the retaining walls, at the very first meeting of, of the specific plan group. We talked about how much excavation we wanted to allow on lighthouse and, and foam. And we said we did not want to do a lot of digging. We did not want to remove a lot of, of soil. So setting a standard of ten foot height. For retaining walls is going totally against everything. I mean, that was unanimous. All of the business people and the residents agreed. And, and yet, we're changing what it was that we said we wanted to do. I think it's a mistake. So those are the rest of them. Thank you.
We do have a few people online, so just before. You begin your comment, we will let you go next, but I want to announce for the public. How they can join in case they're watching on YouTube or TV, just to give them a little bit of time. So once again, to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four, toll free. Once again, that toll free phone number is eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four. Then enter the webinar ID, one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using the last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. And you can go ahead and provide yours. Please provide your name for the record if you feel comfortable.
Certainly. My name is Michaeline Moraz, and basically what I want to say is I strongly support. Sharon Dwight's commentary, and I especially wanted to emphasize the definition of open space that she referred to on page three. Regarding the outdoor seating and the public artwork. I think if, since it says that you have to have at least two of those. If you chose open space and public artwork that bench the four foot bench, I think that. As a practical matter, virtually eliminates open space. And as a further comment, I wanted to say that. Open space is so critical to development. I realize we're in a housing crisis and. There are a lot of problems to address, but in order to make. Urban or small town life. The kind of life that is really welcome and desirable for residents, you have to have. Open space that really allows for public gatherings, public and private on, in a residential area. And to create a situation where by making some choices. In the plan, you can virtually eliminate that defeats the whole purpose of quality of life issues for open space. So I would request that item A, the outdoor seating and. Item G, public artwork be removed. As qualifiers and examples of what open space is. And allow for the true creation of open space. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no hands raised online or in the council chambers.
Okay, well, we'll take it back to the planning commission for consideration.
Well, I've got a comment.
Well, I think Sandy's just started here.
Okay.
Well, you know, I don't know what to do. I sent an email at the last minute to Jennifer and to Kim with my comments. And walked away from it. They're sitting on the desk, but that would be the print form.
Here.
Well, aren't you smart? This is great. I really have only two major comments. The rest is all. Detail that we've talked about through our public comment and also through Fernanda's. Presentation. And so I'd like to just talk about my major thoughts. The first one is on the, on the downtown specific plan. And it's a question of not understanding. Building design mass and scale, it shows the maximum number of stories. Alvarado, four stories, density cap overlay, four stories. I don't remember what the density cap overlay encompasses geographically. Because then it goes on to say East Village, three stories, Pearl District, three stories. Somehow I thought this was part of the density cap. And then finally, it says all other districts, two stories. And I would love to see a definition of what are these other districts where it's two stories? So that's my first major comment. And question, really.
So there is a map in the specific plan that defines the location of the district, so you're working at a little bit of a disadvantage by just looking at an excerpt. So the other districts include the district we're sitting in right now. The, the district that goes from Van Buren Street to Pacific Street. And that is called the Pierce District. The. What's the other one?
Island of Adobes, where the heart now, is that where the new restaurant opened up?
Yeah, so the, the island of the Adobes is basically the, the National Historic Landmark District. So just adjacent to us was Stokes, Adobe, Cooper, Malera. And then is it the hair, their end, which is Custom House Plaza and that historic district. So the two historic districts are called Islands of Adobes and the Heritage District, and those are the other districts.
What about the area between Elastero Lake and Sloate? Is that the four foot density cap?
Sloate is in.
It's not in the downtown specific plan.
Are you meaning between Lake Elastero and Jack's Park?
And, and yes.
So that's the, yeah, that's the Pearl District.
So the Pearl District, the limit would be three stories, East Village, three stories. Where is the forest, where are we allowing the four stories, this density cap overlay?
That's a good question, because I believe that the density gap overlay does go over the Pearl District. Right? It does go in the.
So what I remember, and I'd have to pull out the plan just to specifically answer you. So we had a height requirement, and then. Individual projects weren't being able to move forward because the lots were too small, so developers, and they only could get like a few units on the property. So the city council approved. That you could, if there's like a total cap of that area of so many units, let's say it's a hundred, I'm not remembering. And that you could move the units within that area. So let's say your lot. At thirty dwelling units per acre would have been limited to five units. It allowed you to increase the number of units on that property. To try to encourage additional housing development in that Pearl area. And I, what I'm not remembering was there a height increase approved with that as well? With the density increase.
Yeah, the, it went up to four stories.
So they increased it up to four, okay.
I wouldn't ask the question if I didn't have an opinion about it. And so if you're converting an old neighborhood that's basically one and two stories, one story homes and two story apartments. To a more dense urban environment, it's pretty easy to go up one more floor to three. But four stories looks like a silo, you know, in the middle. And I'm not sure that four stories, I think we need to define the exact area where this density overcap overlay is.
So there is a map, we can provide it, but just once again, the existing specific plan has these requirements. This would only apply to SB thirty five projects.
Okay.
If you were to change it.
All right, I think that is an issue. My other major comment is on, and again, I really want to thank Sharon for her participation. And for all of the things that she's written and suggested, because what this has done is to separate. The downtown, the lighthouse, which were two different things with some commonality. On the lighthouse plan, I think there is a mistake in the narrative. The third floor setback. In my view, should be twelve feet from the sidewalk edge and seven feet from the building front edge. Since most of the sidewalks are four feet deep to begin with, and some on lighthouse are even deeper. If you have a se, a seven foot setback from the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is already seven feet deep, you have no setback at all. So my, my point is that, yes, this differs from the lighthouse specific plan. But in my view, the third floor setback. Define your terms, should either be twelve feet from the sidewalk edge or seven feet from the building front edge, so there actually is a setback. I just, you know, numerically, is not going to add up to any setback at all if it's from the sidewalk edge and it's seven feet.
I believe that we. We meant to say from the property line. I find it.
But it does say back of sidewalk.
Back of sidewalk?
I think that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. I think it's just, it, it has to be, well, if they're going to submit a plan and it's going to be approved because it's. Specific, we need to be a little more specific there. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I did have a comment.
Mike, go ahead.
When we're talking open space, sometimes, sometimes they're talking about the rooftop. And, and I'm, I'm wondering about the first floor, the, the commercial floor. In the, in the mixed, mixed use. I, I can't see having, having fifty square feet loose in that, in that zone. And it, and, and that would be public space. As opposed to private space, which would be on the second and third stories. So that's, that, that becomes a little, you know, how, how should you say, guesswork. On, on the, the applicant to, to, to try to, try to suss that out.
What would you suggest, Mike?
I think, I think you gotta, you gotta move that, move that, that open space up into the private area in the second, third, second, third roof. And. And they call it, well, call it, call it private, private. Because, because you don't want to call it public, because you don't want the public walking around in front of your, in front of your apartment. Cat.
Is that your suggestion for change?
Yeah.
Fernanda. On that. Space, the courtyard. You say a four foot bench, but you don't say what the dimensions of that four foot bench are. If it's one foot wide, to be, then twice that at twenty four inches wide. So it's kind of vague as to what we're talking about here, and I thought we were trying to get specific. I think we need to. Clarify. And then, I'd like your opinion of, how much space are we talking about? For the two foot by four foot bench or twenty six inches? I don't care. But how much space are we talking about here? Twenty five square feet?
Because the open space is only fifty.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I mean.
Yeah.
The open space requirement in. That we. Made as a standard is. No horizontal dimension shall be less than ten feet. So just by that, ten by ten is a hundred.
Okay.
That you actually, and, and just let me say. Sorting this out and putting together has been like a big pot of soup, and I think you've done a great job of. Being specific and trying to fix this issue. I compliment you and, and the rest of the staff for coming up, what you've come up with. Thank you.
Steven?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay.
Well, again, I wanted to thank staff for, for, what, what did you call it? A bowl of soup? Yeah. And also, I'd like to thank Sharon Dwight for, I found her. Her letter is very helpful. As, as Sandy said before. So I guess one question for, you know, we don't have to approve this. We've been waiting for four years. It'd be nice, we're pretty close to something. Here, i- is there, there really isn't a deadline. This is what, two thousand seventeen, this, this all became required?
Eighteen. So if you want to continue it to January and have another hearing, we can do that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out what our constraints.
I would say the ADU ordinance tonight, I'm going to have a very different opinion, but this. You want to, we don't, we only have one project pending that's looking at SB thirty five.
Okay, so again, I wanted to compliment the staff on, on putting this all together, because it's pretty close, I think. You know, I'm, I'm not quite. You know, I'm, I'm not quite there in the open space thing, I, I agree that. That part of it probably needs some tightening up. You know, I've, I've seen lots of. Ordinances that include, you know, you have to include two of the following lists to comply. Kind of thing, I'm not sure if this one is actually. Achieving that, um, I don't know what the other commissioners think about that open space thing. But we, we need to give direction, I think, to staff of, of. If we don't like it, of what, what we'd like to see there. It's, it's funny that, you know, what does states hold us, we need thirty-seven hundred new units? Uh, and and you did that calculation of the, basically all six stories, the entire east part of the city or something, it's, it's quite a radical. Change to our, um. To the mass of the buildings in this city.
Jerry?
Yes?
Yeah, units without plumbing.
Yeah. But. Uh, anyways, so the open space thing, I think, um. Needs to be. Uh, further revised. The, um. The twelve-foot setback on Lighthouse. I, I, I remember the, um, being on the ARC and the Planning Commission, how hard everybody worked on that one for a long time, and it, that isn't something that we can just throw off, I think. So, so sort of casually. Uh, Dan, you live in that neighborhood, and what's your stance about that twelve-foot thing?
Funny, as I look at these standards, I mean, I'm looking at it as an architect, and I think. That, that's not a big deal to accommodate, um. You know, the, the, the height limits on plate heights. Absolutely, I think, well, that's. Or mixed-use building where commercial space has different requirements and residential space, and those in turn have different plate height requirements. So I, I tend to look at everything here. With, uh, a- as an architect. And what we're doing is we're taking, uh, what we've used for the last many years to get where, to where we are right now, and we had a mixed-use building that came before a couple of weeks ago. That I thought they did a beautiful job on, and it was with our existing requirements, and then we're turning our existing requirements into a checklist. Things are going to fall through the cracks, is the way I look at it. Uh, I think we have a pretty good start on it, I know lots of suggestions have been made that, uh, contribute to this process. Yeah, I'm. I'm happy with the direction that it's going in general.
What about the twelve-foot, I mean, I, I thought the twelve-foot, um. Brent, it's a Brent, it's a twelve-foot third-story front setback.
I designed the building with a twelve-foot setback.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've seen a bunch of them, it's, it doesn't seem like it's a hardship on anybody.
So the project that it was a hardship on, and you may remember this, but it's been a while, it was Alan Robinson's project. Where true cuts is at the corner of Reside and Lighthouse.
Yep.
And by do, and and the. The debate is that project was starting to go through is that twelve feet would be required from both the corner side and the front, which made the third story unfeasible.
Yeah.
And you may remember Alan came in front of you. As an architect and said, that's too much, I need more flexibility, and that's where the seven feet came from, and actually, the planning commission had a recommendation to council for seven feet. We brought it up to council, and they said, well, what is the seven feet based on? You know, what's the difference between seven and twelve feet? And that's really hard to analyze, um. We couldn't really come up with a technical way. I mean, you could take every lot and just draw a twelve-foot line across the front, and then based on the depth of the lot, you could see how much is left, but. It's very challenging to. Explain how many lots are disqualified from development, how many lots it's applicable. We thought at staff level that the seven feet was reasonable, because it provided some setback, it provided relief.
On, on side streets.
No, even on, on Lighthouse. We proposed that the housing, if our objective is to do infill housing. That with the third story setback seven feet, that potentially gets us more units, that was our thought way back when. The other side of that is it's. Not setback enough, um, we're going to have a real challenge here, and we're going to talk about our housing element at seven o'clock. I can't even tell you what our changes to standards will look like. With three thousand six hundred and fifty-four housing units being reviewed. All scrutinized by the state of California as well, so, um. We thought this was a reasonable number. You could propose to keep twelve feet. It'll just result in fewer housing units.
It seems to me it was like twelve feet in the front, seven on the side streets.
It was, it was, it was. But so now you would propose seven feet from the property line, not from.
We always meant from the property line, and if the language doesn't say that, then we need to correct that.
Yeah, and so you have a corner building, and you're going to go seven feet in from the front and seven feet in from the side, which. Creates an equal space.
Okay, well, it's a good point of discussion among us right now, I think. Well, so what about, as long as we're, you know, discussing things? What about the, um, does anybody have a fix for this open space thing? I, I feel like it's not resolved.
It isn't, I don't think.
So what direction would we give staff if it was continued, you know, how would we direct them to improve it, do you think?
Well, I think Mike Brassfield came up with the idea of removing, or one of us did, removing the bench and the artwork. And creating either a percentage of the building or, like in the draft here. A percent of the frontage going in. Square footage requirement, but not the, uh, accents like the bench and the artwork.
Okay.
I, I agree, accessories are, uh, accessories like art.
Accessories, sorry.
You know, it's like, that's not artwork, it becomes very subjective.
That's a good point, yes.
And I, I think there's one other area that the city needs to look at. We have a lot of substandard-sized lots. And now that we're, we're faced with it, these smaller living quarters of ADUs. Maybe we could look at those lots. And in order to maintain. A certain. Eye quality. That maybe we could say that you can build on that substandard lot, but only to a maximum of X number of square feet. So that it would still maintain the side lot clearances and the front lot clearance. But it would be a maximum square footage of utilization on the lot. I think that that's one of the things that some cities are now looking at. And I think that we should look at that as well. Because we could put those lots into use. To make this thirty-odd hundred. Deficit in housing yet. And I don't know if you're going to cover it tonight, Clem, uh, Kim or not, but. One of the questions I was asking, why are we in this situation? We can't build. I had to explain to them that the state of California. Refuses to listen to the fact that we cannot build. Because of a court action. And I think that the public needs to know that, that it's not that the city of Monterey is sitting on our hands, it's just we cannot. Without water, build anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, so I have a couple of other issues, just to, to, because what I, what I would like to see is a motion. To continue with specific instruction to staff. Like the open space, and so the other issues I have on my list are the, um, Sharon brought up. Like, um. Employee parking plan should still be required. Any discussion about?
I like that.
Employee parking plan?
I like, I like it, residential parking plan.
Yeah, so you think those should be retained in this checklist thing?
Well, I kind of do, because I, I think there's a little bit of genius in having this. Ability to establish in a dense area, establish parking on another location not to exceed a half mile, because I think as we get denser and denser. This is going to become not just lighthouse-wide, but city-wide.
That's true, yeah.
So I think that is a good issue to tighten up as well.
There are two kinds of parking, I think it was employee parking, what was the other one?
Residential parking plan.
So right now, that standard applies to the Canary Road District and doesn't apply to the Lighthouse specific plan, we. Eliminated it as part of the Lighthouse specific plan development, so that would be. More restrictive than our current standards.
Does the residential parking plan interfere with ADUs? I thought the state said if there was parking, or if there was alternative, uh. Uh, sources of, of transportation, that you couldn't require parking. Spaces, is that, is that right? And if so, we just can't go ahead and do this, because it might be in contravention of the state law and our own law on ADUs.
So these objective design standards do not apply to ADUs. But I want to add, if we come up with a residential and employee parking plan requirement, we need to make it objective, and I just don't know how to do that.
Well, you, you gave it a, a great start by this half-mile-away thing, so that's good, um. I think the issues that seem to be just. Needing more, the open space definition. The entrance plaza size. The set third-floor setback on Lighthouse. And the residential or, or a parking plan, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and I know there are more issues, but those are the ones I can think of right now.
What about the, the ten-foot maximum?
Or plate height.
Actually, the, the proposed. Checklist is a ten-foot minimum plate height on the first floor. What, let's talk about that issue, what?
Well, it's the commercial use, usually you do a drop, drop-in ceiling, and you have. Your dock work and everything hanging, and they're like.
Right.
An eight-foot ceiling for commercial space, that's, that's not even leasable. You know, you're going to take that kind of space.
Mr. Chair, we're past five-thirty.
Yes, I know. We need to, uh. Interesting conclusion, um.
Well.
What else did you have?
I, I'll make a motion to continue this item. With specific direction to staff.
I, I'd like to say that we come back, we, you know, before we convene on this issue. And we do our homework in order to be more helpful to staff, I don't think we're going to do it right here in this moment.
So how would we, um, how, how do we do that, Kim?
If an individual commissioner wants to meet with Fernanda on their concerns, we can do that, we can't have a meeting outside of these council chambers, but. If you, you know, it's. I, I imagine particularly our architects may have some input, so if there's. Um, a specific issue we would like to meet with Fernanda, and you can, and, um. And express your concerns.
I'll, I'll make a motion anyway to continue this item. And, um, the. To revise the open space. Uh, part of it to, uh, to have a better definition of the open space. And to exclude. Bench and the artwork from that list. There is one part of it. A, another part of this direction would be to maintain the twelve-foot. Third-floor parking lot, uh, setback. Lighthouse. That third-floor setback from the property line. And.
About, about the roof types?
About what?
The roof types.
Um, good, thank you, yes. And to all, in- include, um. On your roof types, you know, vaulted. And, you know, round and domed roof structures. And I guess, I, I, the last one I would include would be that the, um. Uh, the, um. That metal materials be. Considered on, on walls. Any opinion on that?
Well, the material is used quite often these days.
Yeah, I don't think we should exclude it.
That's what the, uh, the Porsche dealer has. On, uh, on, I guess that's three months. Maybe it's Del Monte. Del Monte.
Um, so there's my motion.
And is there any reason why two couldn't meet with the, with her and discuss it? The two architects?
Is that legal, Kim?
Yes, you could.
What'd you say, Adam?
Yes, yes, you could, you could have a, effectively a, a request that there be a, a temporary ad hoc. Committee of just the two architects that would convene with the planning staff, um, for just between now and the next council, uh, commission discussion on this item.
All right, that's one more item, that one more item, a re, a tighter definition of an entrance plaza.
Okay, so also include a tighter definition of an entrance plaza.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any further discussion?
Should we go to a date certain?
Um, that would be nice if I, let me just look at my January calendar.
And that would prevent renoticing?
Correct. So that could be January, I don't know if we're going to make that, are we going to make January tenth? That public package would have to be pub, no, next week, um, January twenty-fourth.
Okay, January twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion to. What was that, January twenty-fourth?
January, uh, yeah, a motion to continue this item to January twenty-fourth with the stated, uh, direction to staff.
The maker of the second accepts the modification.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? Okay, Jennifer, can we do a poll vote, please?
Yes, Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Great, this motion is approved, and the item is continued with direction to staff. As listed to the January twenty-fourth. Twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, I think we can recess now until our evening session at seven PM.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan.
To call this meeting of the Monday Planning Commission Evening Session to order for Tuesday, December 13th, 2020. So next on our agenda was item number, well, I need to do public comments, right? Again, for this one.
Okay.
And also the roll call.
I'm just in a big hurry, aren't I?
I know, I know.
Well, let's start with roll call.
All right, Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Blash, uh, sorry, Vice Chair Milich.
I think I'm here, yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latessa.
Here.
There you are, and we are reconvened with all Commissioners present. And for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to join.
Sorry.
Oh, staff, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole, Principal Planner Fernando Rivera, Associate Planner Kristi Sabdo, and myself, Recording Secretary Jennifer Clearing. Now for public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey for the 10-second delay and contact. With up to.
Again, copper.
If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delay. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that toll-free phone number is 833-568-8864. Then enter the webinar ID, which is 161-990-8039. Once again, this webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If prompted for participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment by phone, I mean by Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, please stay within that limit. And I do see members of the public join from online, but I see no hands raised.
Okay, anyone in the chamber, council chamber?
No.
Okay, well, now we're going to move on to item number five. And this is an introduction to the Monterey 2031 General Plan Update. It's not a project under CEQA. And this is a. And this is a staff consultant presentation.
Yes, but I'll be introducing the consultant.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Christie Sabdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Diet in Batia is one of the city's on-call planning consultants who was selected through a competitive RFP process to prepare the city's general plan update. The firm has prepared general plans for more than sixty-five cities across the state, including for coastal communities like Pacifica, Carlsbad, and Oceanside. Currently, their firm is leading some of the most prominent general plan assignments in Northern and Central California, including comprehensive general plan updates for the cities of Sacramento, Oakland, and Napa. Andrew Hill, Principal for the firm, is the city's primary point of contact and will be leading the city through the general plan update efforts. He will be presenting an introduction to the project Monterey twenty thirty one, an update to the housing, land use, and safety elements, which are required due to the new state laws and regulations, so I'm going to pass it off to Andrew Hill.
Great, thank you, Christine, good evening. So. Yeah, so as we start up work on the Monterey twenty thirty one general plan update, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide an orientation to the, to the project. And so I have a quick presentation tonight. I wanted to touch on what the project involves to provide an overview of the housing element key content and some of the legal requirements for that portion of the project, to talk about our overall approach to the work and then the timing and next steps. So the project that we're calling Monterey twenty thirty one is a targeted update to the, to the housing, safety, and land use elements of the general plan. As Christie mentioned, per California state law, every community in California must update the housing element of their general plan to plan for local housing needs and, and new state laws over the coming eight years.
Could we have that full screen, please?
I believe it. Am I not sharing?
You have to share it through Zoom. Thanks, Mike.
Aye aye.
Sorry about that.
Good deal.
Much more detail.
I'd say.
There we go. Um, yes, so as I was saying, like other communities in California, Monterey is required to update the housing element of its general plan to address local housing needs and comply with new state law. But given where we are in Monterey between the California coastline with wooded hills in the backdrop, there's risk of flooding, of sea level rise, of wildfire, and so as we think about planning where new housing, think very carefully about how to integrate it into the community and make sure that we're, we're carefully considering emergency evacuation capacity and emergency preparedness. And, and so the housing element is triggering an update to the safety element of the general plan where those topics are addressed. Then additionally, recently, the, the Monterey Airport has changed some of the safety zones, and now there's some conflicts with city zoning that need to be reconciled. That's triggering an update to the land use element. And so the project is really looking holistically at those three interrelated topics and, and, and doing a targeted update to those three elements of the, of the general plan. Water supply is, of course, a critical issue. It is the single biggest impediment to housing construction on, on the Monterey Peninsula. But the supply constraint is being addressed through a separate, parallel process that involves potentially construction of a desalination plant and increased use of, of recycled water. Our objective with this project is to make sure that the city updates the general plan to comply with the legal requirements and to work with the community to build consensus around a plan so that when water is available, there's a plan ready to implement. Of course, the housing element will also have to deal with interim, in the interim, making sure that, making use of water credits and other strategies to, to try and provide housing to satisfy current need. So let's take a look at some of the housing element content itself and provide an overview of that document. The housing element is, of course, a part of the general plan. It's one of eight required elements, along with land use, circulation, open space, noise, safety. It is essentially the city's plan for addressing local housing needs. Under California law, it must be updated once every eight years to plan for the next eight-year cycle. And the housing element, unlike other elements of the general plan, is subject to a host of different legal requirements, including review by the California Department of Housing and Community Development to certify that the document is complete. There are myriad of legal requirements that pertain to the housing element, but I wanted to touch on a couple of the key required components of that document. The first of them is an inventory of sites that are available for housing, and this is, these are usually shown on a map, and also included in a table together with the, the realistic capacity projection for housing on each of those sites that's based on past performance in the community and consideration of factors like environmental constraints or market factors. Additionally, the housing element needs to include an assessment of local housing needs based on a review of census data to identify any special needs groups in the community. It needs to include an analysis of any constraints to housing, be they regulatory constraints or process constraints, environmental constraints, or market constraints. And it also needs to consider any fair housing issues, which means essentially whether there's any disadvantaged groups like the disabled or older adults or linguistic or ethnic minorities who may face discrimination in access to housing. And then the final component is a program of implementing actions that address any constraints, special needs, or fair housing issues that were identified. A term you hear a lot in relation to housing elements is RENA. It stands for the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and it's essentially the total number of housing units that the city must plan to accommodate over the coming eight-year period. The city, the legal requirement for the city is to make sure that the zoning map has, has adequate capacity to accommodate its RENA, not necessarily to build all of the units. RENA is separated into four affordability categories that are based on the, have the median household income in the county. So households that are making less than fifty percent of the Monterey County median income are considered very low income, and households making more than a hundred and twenty percent are considered above moderate income. This slide shows Monterey's RENA allocation for the coming eight-year cycle. The city's required to plan for three thousand six hundred and fifty-four new housing units broken out into the income categories as shown. That's, that's a big number, and so it's going to require a thoughtful strategy for accommodating RENA and addressing new state law. Let me touch now on our approach to the overall project. Really, community engagement is going to be at the core of what we do. What we want to do is really make a, have a variety of different outreach strategies to engage a broad range of voices in the community. We, through our outreach, we want to raise awareness of the legal requirements for the housing element and also use the input that we've received to shape strategies for the housing element to ensure that it reflects community values and priorities. And by doing all these things, we think that we can build trust with the community and build support for the plan. We have a wide range of different strategies planned. Last week, for example, we ran a series of community listing sessions where we met with different groups in the community to hear about issues, opportunities, and priorities. So we met with architects who use the zoning code on a, you know, on a daily basis to, to hear from them. We met with some major landholder owners. We met with some different employers and a variety of different neighborhood groups as well, and to really get cast the net wide and hear a variety of different perspectives. We're also working with Monterey High School students and working with them to generate a, a survey on climate resilience that they will lead. We're planning to launch that in the new year, and then in the spring, we'll really make a splash with some big community events, including community workshops and an interactive online survey that will allow people to evaluate different locations for housing and provide input on, on other improvements that might be needed if housing is going to be located in those areas. All of our outreach will be supported by a series of background analysis. We want to make sure that people have data and information to support their decisions. And so we'll be doing a site feasibility analysis to identify locations within the community where, where change is foreseeable and, and where housing could possibly go. As I mentioned, we'll be doing that assessment of, of constraints to housing development and fair housing issues. We're also going to be doing an emergency evacuation analysis that looks at evacuation capacity under a multi-hazard scenario. And we'll also bring best practices and, and precedent images to help people visualize what change could look like in, in different areas. So let me now sort of close with timing and next steps. As we think about the housing element, there are some legally defined timeframes. So the housing element is, is due to be certified by December fifteenth of next year. The, as I mentioned, the Department of Housing and Community Development must review the housing elements before the process is complete. And under state law, they have ninety days to complete their review. Before we send the, the draft to HCD for their review, it needs to be available for public review here in Monterey for a period of thirty days. So those are some defined timeframes. And building them into the overall schedule, we're going to work through the project in four key phases. Right now, we're really starting up, we're in the issue and opportunity identification phase, which involves that background analysis and, and community outreach. In the spring, as I mentioned, we'll be working with the community through workshops and an interactive online survey to explore different options and alternatives for accommodating new housing and satisfying new state law. We anticipate having a draft of the housing element ready for public review in the summer. And then following that, it would be sent up to HCD for their ninety-day review, and we would expect it would come again before the Planning Commission and ultimately to City Council by the end of next year. So looking ahead to what's coming up, I mentioned that youth-led survey, we're hoping to launch that early next year. We'll be preparing a technical background report that should be available in, in February. And by the end of February, early March, we'll be looking to launch an interactive online survey, followed by community workshops. So that's a quick overview of the project, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Mr. Hill, you mentioned a three thousand plus number of houses that need to be fulfilled within this period. Is this in addition to the current list or included?
It's, it includes.
Good.
Takes over, yes.
I would hate to have twice that number.
Oh, yeah, not kidding.
How, how is that number determined?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the process starts at the state level. The state looks at population projections for the whole of California, and they also consider things like the rate of overcrowding, the rate of homelessness, and, and they decide for each of the region in California, a share. And then for our region here, the Ambag region, Ambag then receives that share and comes up with a methodology to allocate between the different jurisdictions. That process happened over about a year and a half period, and it was formalized, I believe, in, in April of this year.
So all the jurisdictions, are they just accepting of this? Has there been any pushback? I, I like our situation without water, I mean, it's not going to happen, I mean, so.
There was, so the, the local process involves releasing draft numbers, and there is a, there's a, or, for appeals. And so that went through, and maybe, I don't know, Kim, do, can you speak to the city's response to the numbers?
Sure. It was an interesting process. And basically, what I can say is there were initial numbers published that were about half of what we ultimately received. And through public comment at the Ambag level, there was an increase. Monterey received a substantially increased number to, for equity issues in the region. That we had, we are more affluent than other communities and have less low-income individuals. And the process set to, through the RENA process, to redistribute that on the peninsula. And the, you have to realize the Ambag Board is comprised of every jurisdiction in Monterey County and, as well as Santa Cruz County. And that very large board with one representative from each city, plus the Board of Supervisors, ultimately voted for Monterey to receive this number. Our representative to that board voted against the RENA allocation, but we were by far in the minority and, and lost that vote. So we ended up with a number of three thousand six hundred and fifty-four housing units, if you keep it to other jurisdictions. Our number of very low-income zoning for new residential units is much higher than some of our adjacent cities, but it was for the reason I expressed. The formal appeals were only filed by, I believe there were two cities in Monterey County. There was one in the Salinas Valley that suggested the peninsula should even get higher numbers. That it was, you know, once again, trying to balance where jobs are versus where people live. Regionally, there was a very strong feeling that Monterey should take a greater proportion of those numbers.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, me too.
First of all, first question, when we, our council goes ahead and adopts a plan, who has the ultimate say of approving that plan? Is it Ambag or someone else?
For the housing element?
Yes.
The city of Monterey will approve its own general plan, but we accept comments from, to get it certified, it has to go to the state of California, so we have to achieve certification as well.
Okay, now, the second question is, as I read it, there has to be a plan drawn up to accommodate as opposed to actual units built?
Correct.
Okay.
Adequate zoning and sites that meet specific criteria established by the state of California. And Andrew can speak more specifically, it's a little bit different this go-around than it has been. We've worked on a lot of different housing elements, the, the criteria is getting more and more stringent, so.
So if there's no water, we don't have to build buildings without water?
Correct, if there's no water available, there will be no building permits issued. Regionally, there's some pretty significant changes in the water situation that's probably another, a discussion for another night, if you'd like to be updated on that.
And if builders decide that they won't build because they can't afford to build a certain kind of housing that we're required to accommodate, that's just tough, right?
Yes, we're not required to build the units.
Okay.
There's recognition that the city, cities don't typically build the units. That's done by the private sector, the nonprofit sector, and our partners in housing construction. I think the thing that we can anticipate is increasing, if we don't build our regional housing needs allocation, that's why we're subject to SB thirty-five. I think as you look at the new housing legislation coming down, we will increasingly lose local control of our zoning approvals. Until we meet our RENA, once we meet our RENA, then I think we regain a lot more capability, but that's going to be probably almost impossible until we have an adequate water supply to supply water to the number of houses.
How can you, how can you build something without water and then expect the building official to issue a certificate of occupancy?
No, we won't issue even the building permit without adequate water supply.
Thank you.
I'm fascinated by the chart, the executive summary on Exhibit A that shows the income group totals for the cities in Monterey County as well as Santa Cruz County. And except for the unincorporated areas of both counties, Monterey is the only city in which the very low-income number, one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven, is virtually the same as the above moderate number, putting the lowest and the highest at either end of our population demographic, with very little in the middle. Who are these very, very low-income people and where do they live?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting question. I think there was, I did have a slide that had some indication of income, but for example, just an average household of four people in Monterey County makes ninety thousand dollars. And so these vary. And so these very low are people making less than fifty percent of that. So a household of, imagine a household of four making forty-five thousand dollars a year, that would be, that would be who they are. So I could imagine it's perhaps, it could be, you know, a single mother working in the hospitality industry might fall into, into that category. Perhaps some students might fall into that category.
Does none of the other cities have as low, as high a percentage of very low by comparison to all of the other categories? And yet, it doesn't seem that Monterey has that. I mean, if you look around, you walk around, you see people like, wow, this is shocking.
Yeah. So the way that we demonstrate capacity for those lower-income units is there's two avenues for that. One, it could be there's actually a developer who's made a commitment to build affordable housing. And so those actual units would be counted towards the, typically the low and the very low are counted together and called lower income. So that's avenue number one. But the other way to do it is to say, you know, there aren't enough developers coming forward to build all of those units. And so the states, the state has decided that higher density can be a proxy for, for more affordable units. I think the thinking is, you know, a smaller unit would be perhaps affordable by design, you know, a smaller apartment would have a lower rent. And so if we can demonstrate that, that there is land that's available for housing development at the appropriate densities, then the state will allow us to count those units towards the lower-income RENA.
So are these totals on your exhibit real people? Or are these projected people based on the availability of land to build upon?
Well, I think it's projected based on the assessed need. As I mentioned in answer to that first question, they decided regionally, there's this much need, and then Ambag divvied it up between the jurisdictions. So it's based on projected need.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So the penalty part of this whole thing, Kim mentioned that the state has made it so that part of the penalty is we lose control over our zoning. And I guess that's all in one of the Senate bills that was passed.
So it's, it's in the statute, the California Code of Regulations. However, it doesn't happen on day one, you know. So the housing element is due on December fifteenth of next year. December sixteenth, you don't automatically lose local control. That, if that is, that is perhaps an eventual consequence. What we will do through this process is work with the community, work with decision-makers to come up with a plan that meets the legal requirements. And we, we expect that it will be certified as complete by the state. As we move through the eight-year cycle, at the halfway point, the state will evaluate the progress of every community in California towards their, towards their housing element. And if the state determines that, you know, insufficient progress is, is being made, they'll look at, they'll look at some of the reasons, right? Is it because the city is refusing to, you know, to give permits for new housing, you know, being a bad actor? Or is it because there's other factors in the way? And I think that, you know, the case where if, if the city did not adopt a housing element by the deadline and have it certified by HCD and that, and they didn't make an effort to work with HCD towards certification, then after a certain period of time, fines would, would be implemented. But having worked with other jurisdictions, HCD looks, looks for a good faith effort. You know, are you, are you submitting a draft document? Are you trying to, to meet the legal requirements? Are you reaching out to HCD to, to consult with them on, on, on their comments? And if you're making that good faith effort, that they're, they're going to work with you to, to achieve certification. So, you know, there, it's, I think it's more in extreme cases where, where, you know, penalties and ultimately, you know, loss of local control kicks in. However, I mean, you know, Kim has mentioned SB thirty-five, that's the, the process that I was saying halfway through the last housing element cycle. The state did an evaluation of all communities in California and, and communities that were determined to not be on track were, were then made subject to SB thirty-five. There may be other laws passed like that, that, that are aimed at, at trying to facilitate housing. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, so it's a mix of loss of how, of zoning control and fines that are sort of incremental as you go along with a year timeframe.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, the state is trying to, with, with a raft of new laws, they're trying to get away from discretionary review and have things done ministerially by objective standards. That's a big push in new state laws, you've seen with the ADU, ADU laws. And then more recently, the governor signed some laws this fall that will come into force next year that allow for housing on land that's zoned only for commercial uses. And so that, I mean, those are laws that happen at the state level. The intent is, the intent is to try to facilitate badly needed housing. The, the effect is to, to take away local control.
So you don't, you don't think we should emulate the city of Bradford, huh?
What did Bradford do?
Yeah, what did they do?
Bradford is a very wealthy community down in north of Los Angeles. And to satisfy their lower-income housing, they had their domestic staff live in the buildings that they built. And they claimed that as part of their housing element, they were satisfying low-cost housing by putting their domestic servants in the housing on the premises where they worked. The state didn't like that.
Yeah, I think our goal is, we've been successful many times to obtain certified housing elements. I also think the Planning Commission is very well aware, the City Council's number one priority is housing development and affordable housing. So one of the exciting things in front of us is on February twenty-first, we're going to propose a joint meeting between the City Council and Planning Commission at the City Council meeting. So we will be a little bit further along in some of our technical reports for housing and hoping to, to launch some interactive products at that meeting so we can do some online public outreach. But it is a city's goal to, to accommodate its housing need. And this is going to be a big challenge in front of us as we discuss adequate sites and how we can do that, because we've historically not been able to do that.
Do I have a question? So we have a number and it runs through the next eight years. Is that correct?
Yes.
What happens after those eight years are up? Are we giving another number given to us or how's that work?
Yeah, they, again, the, this process would be the same. The state would start by assessing need. And that need, that assessed need would account for any backlog, essentially, unmet need would be rolled into the, into the future number.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question of your, that you consult with. Is there any other city that is dealing with this water issue? Or we are at odds with this organization as compared to an order for us not to build anymore until we get more water?
I mean, there's other, other communities on Monterey Peninsula that I think are in the same situation, but it does, to my knowledge, it's relatively unique within California.
Didn't Carmel meet their quota by building senior housing for seniors, low-cost housing for seniors?
No, I don't believe any of the cities on the peninsula met their RENA number, but we can report back to you.
Okay, please do.
Nobody has the thirty-six hundred and fifty-four height. Nobody is anywhere near that.
That's right.
So in, in general, in order to achieve three thousand and a half new structures for accommodation, we can't do it, or can we do it with the existing open land within the city? Or is it going to have to change?
We don't have any structure, Mike.
That's my point. If we, if we only have one story now, we're going to have to go to three-story on every single parcel in order to accommodate those numbers.
That's a question we're looking at. That's the first step is to look at, you know, what's the capacity under current zoning? How close can we get to that number under current zoning? And then figure out what the gap is and explore different strategies for, for filling that gap with the community. Some of it may involve, you know, higher density in certain locations, but there's other strategies as well. Accessory dwelling units can be, can be a good source of supply that addresses, you know, the lower-income needs as well. Church groups possibly can be, can be a partner in providing affordable housing. There's a lot of churches and religious facilities in Monterey that, that do have land. Some of it's sort of surface parking lots that's underutilized. So if they are willing partners, you know, there's, there's avenues for, for some chipping away at the, at those numbers through a variety of different strategies that don't necessarily all involve, you know, building, building up.
Well, how about the City Council has discussed in the past some kind of database of rented property in the city of Monterey, which the landlords are resistant to. And let's say that my friend has a garage that's been rented out for years illegally. A granny unit that has no permit and no legality. Now suddenly, it's an ADU and is fully legal just by state law having changed. Would this friend be inclined to report this into the new database count? And Monterey would get credit for one more? And there are many, many people like this person that could add to the housing element simply by reporting a illegal granny unit that suddenly became legal.
Yeah, Santa Cruz has had an amnesty program for years. And any, so an amnesty program could, for example, offer an incentive, you know, for, for somebody, a property owner with a unpermitted ADU to come forward. And if they, you know, if they create that unit, it would, it does count towards the RENA. So and it, amnesty program could definitely be a strategy for, for helping to, you know, bridge that gap.
So one caution.
The units are going to be built according to code and probably illegal units are not built according to code.
Right, they have to bring it up, that's, they would have to bring it up to code. But then there's, there are, you know, incentives for the, for the property owner too. Because if they do have someone staying there and it's not built to code, then there's a big liability for them, you know, if the inhabitant happens. And so there's an incentive just by taking away the liability to bring it up to code for them.
Just one of the nuances that are unique to Monterey, I don't, we do see people coming forward with units that maybe weren't permitted in the past and going through the building. It's an administrative, ministerial process now. The one piece that's still a significant hurdle is the Water District requires accounting for all the water on site. So as new ADUs are proposed, they're going out and doing their inspection. Sometimes they find out a larger sink was installed and was allowed, so they're having to rectify those credit issues. And you have to have enough water credits for the new ADU. And that's where the most significant hurdle is for ADUs. We're still seeing substantial construction of ADUs, but it's, do they have enough water for an independent bathroom and an independent kitchen? And where they don't, what we're seeing is people are proposing conversion of interior spaces in their house to JADUs. And you can actually share bathroom facilities between the primary residents and the JADU. So you don't need as much water for a JADU if we're extremely constrained. So I do want to, just because you're going to hear this from the community, that the water credit, you know, the Water District is going out and looking at the credits on site before that new ADU is permitted.
Thank you. Question, are we going to take any public input? Okay, so.
Actually, I have one more question from Mr. Hill.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, are you, are you seeing the results of ADU not necessarily positive?
So certainly in the listing sessions last week, we heard some concerns from the community, people concerned about parking. You know, if there's substantial ADU construction in the neighborhoods, what's that going to do to the parking situation? But as part of those listing sessions, I think, I will say people were also suggesting solutions. And so it was a very constructive conversation to, you know, daylighting those issues, but also presenting possible solutions.
My current experience in my neighborhood has been an ADU built on a, behind a regular, a normal house. And the parking went from one to two vehicles to six. And that is, in my mind, that's, if this happens too often, then we're going to be visiting a whole new parking dimension. And with the associated problems.
Okay. All right, so we're going to open it up to a public comment.
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four-twelve-three. Once again, that phone number is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. Then enter the webinar ID one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And I do see there is someone on the line with their hand raised. Their name is Kalisha.
Jennifer, we're going to use the three-minute timer.
Oh, yes. There will be a three-minute timer and Kalisha should have the floor now.
Very thank you. A good evening, commissioners. My name is Kalisha Webster and I am the Senior Housing Advocate at Housing Choices, a nonprofit service provider that has been helping people with developmental and other disabilities with finding and retaining affordable housing for the past twenty-five years. I want to first thank staff this introductory presentation to the housing element update process. As we all know, California is in the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, making jurisdictions' response to the housing element update process extremely important as we determine how best to meet the overwhelming need within our communities. As we've seen in other jurisdictions in Southern California and the Bay Area, who are farther along in update process, HCD has made it clear that jurisdictions are being held to a higher standard than ever before, not only to make sure they have zoning capacity to meet their designated RENA, but also to affirmatively further fair housing for the most vulnerable residents. The requirement to affirmatively further fair housing must be considered throughout the development of the housing element, including programs, policies, housing needs analysis, and the site's inventory. For people with developmental disabilities who have had few options to live inclusively in the community due to the lack of extremely low-income housing available and many other special needs groups on fixed or limited incomes at greatest risk of homelessness or displacement, what is most needed is programs and policies which will incentivize more extremely low-income housing development. While HCD has not specified a RENA for ELI units, they do provide guidance for jurisdictions to assume at least fifty percent of the very low-income allocation should be planned as extremely low-income housing. In addition, the passage of AB twenty-nine-four will require jurisdictions to start reporting the number of ELI units being built in its annual housing element progress reports to HCD. As the city develops its programs and policies for inclusion in the housing element, we hope to see firm commitments to implement programs with specific timelines and measurable outcomes as required by HCD to increase the production of ELI housing in the city of Monterey. These units should be not only SROs, studios, and one-bedrooms, but also larger units for people with disabilities on fixed incomes needing a larger unit for a living caregiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Jennifer?
That was the only hand I saw raised.
Okay. No action required on this since this was an inter informational presentation, correct?
Correct. And just a reminder for the public and the commission, we are going to be shooting for that joint meeting with our City Council on February twenty-first. I believe it's at seven PM. So we look forward to continuing our discussion. I believe it's at seven PM. So we look forward to continuing our discussion at that date.
And just one last thing. So the, this is the general plan up to date, update. Tonight's focus is just the housing element. There's all this other stuff going on too.
Well, the safety and land use, it's a targeted update. Yeah, those, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six. Consider recommending, recommending to the city council and ordinance amending Monterey City Code Section 38 dash 112.6 accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and amending section 38-11 definitions. And this is exempt from CEQA. So can we have staff report?
Sorry. I think I closed it. Okay. Where's the?
It's on the, oh, yeah, there, yeah.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. My name is Fernanda Roveri, principal planner of the city of Monterey. Today, we would like to present some amendments to our accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendment. I'm going to go through some background info just to show you how much we've done to amend our ordinance over the years. The state has revised the ADU and JADU laws to improve their effectiveness and at creating more housing units. And they've done this over several years. On January 17th, 2017, to respond to the first round of ADU law, the city council adopted an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance to designate areas where ADUs may be located and to place other restrictions. So the, the important thing to note is that this was the first ADU ordinance of the city. And we actually chose areas of the city where to put those ADUs. So we actually looked in our zoning districts and assigned, or came up with a number of parcels where ADUs could be located. And then in, in response to another round of state laws, on October 20th, 2020, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance to prevent ADUs over 16 feet in height. Until the planning commission had an opportunity to provide policy recommendations. And so that's second round of state law allowed ADUs to go up to 16 feet in height. But we needed to amend our original ADU ordinance because it wasn't clear that we didn't want to allow ADUs over 16 feet at the time. So we passed an emergency ordinance. And then on November 2021, we came in compliance with state law to include those regulations in the state law that further reduce barriers that are streamlined the approval process and expanded the capacity to accommodate ADU and JADU development. And in the next slide, one thing to note is although the state law at the time limited ADUs to a 16 foot, or it allowed cities to limit ADUs to 16 feet in height. The city went beyond that and allowed ADUs built above garages and carports in the R3 zoning district up to a 25 foot height limit. So that's one area where the city went beyond state law to allow that extra opportunity for ADUs to locate, be located above garages. But we went, the, the thing to note is that we went from only allowing ADUs in certain areas of the city to now ADUs are allowed in every lot that has an existing or proposed single family or multifamily building. So that has basically expanded the opportunity for ADUs to be located almost in any zoning district in the city. We also allowed, we allowed the ADUs built above garages to have a different roof pitch and form than the associated single family or multifamily dwelling. But we did allow that subject to an architectural review permit. The Public Utilities Commission requires that zoning ordinance amendments be reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission. This means that the ADU ordinance needed to be reviewed by the ALUC. So the city submitted an application for ALUC review of its ADU ordinance. But during this review process, the governor signed two sets of laws. This was in September of this year, 2022, to increase the allowed height of attached and detached ADUs and waive front yard setback limits, limits if they prevent construction of certain ADUs. And so staff was able to incorporate these changes before the ALUC review date. Attachment three of the packet shows the ALUC resolution and their recommendations. They recommended four changes to our ADU ordinance. However, staff is not recommending these changes. One, the ALUC wanted to restrict ADUs to 850 square feet in size. But we are not recommending that because this discriminates against large families. And by the way, these recommendations are for airport safety zones. Two through five. These are the airport zones that are closest to the airport, but that still allow residential construction. So it's a smaller area of the city, but staff felt that making this size restriction would limit the opportunity for ADUs in these areas. Numbers two and three from the ALUC resolution. Staff does not recommend adding those either, either. So they're not reflected in the proposed ordinance before you. Because the recommendation was that JDU shall not exceed 500 square feet. But this is already in our ordinance. So we do not recommend adding that again. And ADUs and JDUs are required to meet California Building Standards Code. So that's, we don't recommend, we didn't recommend adding that either because it's already required. And the fourth item that the ALUC wanted us to consider was prohibiting ADUs and JDUs in the 65 to 69 decibel noise contour of the airport because, but we decided not to recommend that because California Building Code already requires minimum noise insulation performance standards that buffer exterior noise. And that standard requires interior noise levels to be 45 decibels or less. So the one thing that we did recommend to include in our ADU ordinance is that accessory dwelling units and JDUs are prohibited in airport safety zones one and six pursuant to the airport land use and compatibility plan. Airport zones one and six. Residential construction is not allowed in those zones. So we agree that ADUs and JDU should not be built there. And ultimately, if the planning commission recommends this ADU ordinance, because we do not, we did not recommend adding those other four ALUC recommendations, we would, the city council would have to override the ALUC decision by two thirds vote. The second summary, summarized amendments are the ADU definition is being amended to also allow ADUs on the same parcel as a proposed multifamily build dwelling. And to clarify the difference between attached versus detached ADUs. Another amendment is that fire sprinklers shall not be required for an existing single family dwelling or multifamily dwelling as a condition of construction of the ADU. And these are all consistent with the state law that passed in September. I don't know why this is repeated. The next set of amendments are an attached ADU may be up to 25 feet in height and two stories. So again, if you remember, the state law used to allow cities to limit ADUs to 16 feet. And now every attached ADU may go up to 25 feet in height and two stories. A detached ADU, the, the detached ADU height was also increased to 18 feet. If the lot, if the lot is within half mile walking distance of a major transit stop or high quality transit corridor. And it may even go up to 20 feet to accommodate a roof pitch that is aligned with the roof pitch of a single or multifamily dwelling. A detached ADU may be up to 18 feet in height on a lot with an existing or proposed multifamily, multi-story dwelling. And limits on front setbacks cannot prevent construction of an 800 square foot ADU with minimum four foot side and rear yard setback. So as you can see, the last round of state law increased the height of ADUs. And would now allow an ADU to be located in the front yard setback. If there is no other room on the lot for the ADU to be located. This, this is a list of policy discussion items that the city council requested that the planning commission consider. However, because this is this ordinance, the, the state law becomes effective January 1st of 2023. We encourage the planning commission to consider these items at a future meeting. But we wanted to list, list them here. The council wanted the PC to explore incentives linked to affordability. Indefinitely remove an extension of owner occupancy requirements. Remove exceptions for the replacement of garage covered parking slash carport. Remove or loosen floor area ratio requirements. Allow ADUs to be constructed within existing commercial or mixed use buildings. And so this, this one number five, ADUs are already allowed to be constructed on the same lot as a existing or proposed multifamily or single family building. So I guess the number five would, the one change would be allowing ADUs in lots that only have a commercial building. Number six, remove the requirement for a deed restriction for ADUs. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommends city council adoption of the proposed ordinance amendment. And we've attached them as exhibit A, as the ordinance that would go to the city council. And we also attached the strikeout and underline version of the ADU ordinance so that you can see what, what changed. But what I presented to you was a summary of the changes. I'm available for questions. And we don't have anyone in online. But we did, an attorney, a group of attorneys did help us prepare these amendments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners?
Oh, so I have a question. We were told earlier that the, this, passing this item does have some sort of timeframe chart. Can you explain that? Why, what is the time limit on it?
So the governor's, in this legislation in September, it took us October and part of November to write the draft ordinance. The state law becomes effective January 1st. We think incorporating it into our code as soon as possible makes it clear for all of us implementing the law, what we need to do. And we think it's important that we move forward and we do have ADU applications coming, you know, we do see a substantial number of ADU applications. So our recommendation, as Fernanda said, and we separated the two items. There's like the five or six items the council wants you to discuss. You know, we can take the first quarter of next year discussing those items. But we really think these requirements should be, reflect state law as soon as possible.
And there's, and we can bring back those six items.
We will, yeah.
Okay. They would just be additions to whatever we pass tonight. And they would know that too, because doesn't this have to go to the city council after we, if we pass this tonight? It goes straight to them and then they have to decide whether they want to address the six issues now or later.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they'll wait until, well, they have to by law, wait until you debate them and make a recommendation. But I think they'll understand the situation we're in with the September signing of the legislation.
Well, given the number of revisions to the ADU ordinance and the ongoing, this, this document is going to be, it has to be valuable. It's, it's changes all the time.
Excuse me, online commissioners, any comments?
Actually, I have a question. Regarding the sprinkler system. If a, a current residence already has a sprinkling system and builds an ADU, they will not be required to put a sprinkler system in the ADU. Is that correct?
The new law says if, if an ADU is constructed, the ADU would, I, so maybe Kim can help. But I thought the ADU needed fire sprinklers because it was new construction. But the existing single family or multifamily dwelling, if they don't have fire sprinklers, they don't need to be installed.
Yeah, that's correct.
ADU construction.
So one of the questions that's been coming up, you know, if new construction of residential in the city requires installation of fire sprinklers. One of the struggles our building departments have been having is by adding an ADU to the site, in one way, sometimes the building department looks at that as an increase in occupancy. Anticipately increases in occupancy can trigger things like retrofit of existing structures for fire sprinklers. So at the state, I think this has been coming up on a statewide level. This didn't come from the city of Monterey. What the law says is you can't, as the building department, go back and require the main house to be retrofitted to have sprinklers. So that's the clarification in the law.
Yeah, I was trying to frame it a little differently, but I think that your household policies would have a problem if part of the house did have sprinklers and you build a new part that didn't. That's why I asked. So I can understand that the dilemma. Thank you.
Hey, Mike Dawson, you got some questions?
Yeah, um, why would, why would one of those, one of those issues be owner occupier? I would think that would be a safety problem, safety problem, safety issue to keep the, the owner in the house so that bad things don't happen.
I believe owner occupancy can only be required on sites with JDUs. So if a site has an ADU, state law does not allow us to require owner occupancy in either the main house or the ADU. If there's a JADU, which is conversion. If there's a JADU, which is conversion of the interior of a portion of a building up to a maximum of five hundred square feet. Then the ordinance requires that either the main house or the JADU be owner occupied. One of the things that are, or our past city council, we sort of have a new group now, asked us to consider. Is, should we require that owner occupancy for JADUs? You can be. More flexible than state law if you want to be. And so that would be subject to a future planning commission. Discussion.
Steven, any comments, questions?
Are we discussing owner occupancy on the ADU now or saving that for later?
Saving it.
Okay, then no, I have nothing to say.
Okay, so I think we have all our questions answered and now it's time to open up the public comment.
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To provide comments by Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. I see no hands going up online or in person.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment and bring it back to commissioners for comments, motion.
My proposed motion. I move that planning commission adopt a resolution. Recommending that the city council amends Monterey City Code section thirty eight. Dash one one two point six accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And amend section thirty eight dash eleven definitions. And include the attachments as stated on this handout. And remind the city council that we would welcome. Discussing the six items of interest to them at a future date.
Okay, we have a great motion. And we have a second. Any other? Any other comments? And we have a roll call vote, Jennifer.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich.
Steven.
Milich, Milich, you're, you're, yes, there you go.
Richard Brassfield.
Yes.
Richard Dawson.
Yes.
Richard Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latessa.
Yes.
Thank you. This motion is approved and it is not appealable as it is already going to counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I do still, I have a follow up comment.
Sure.
I appreciate that the city. Has been trying to keep up with this race. And then it proves that in some cases we've been reading the tea leaves right. I don't think it will be able to keep up because they keep pushing harder, but. This area staff really has done a great job of. Trying to keep ahead of these timelines and they're not being, the state's not being reasonable in timelines, but. I really appreciate what the city staff here is trying to do.
Yeah, it's the old analogy of a football game with the, the goalposts are constantly moving ahead of you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is to consider. Two four six Anita Street and two five one Clay Street. It's a lot line adjustment, SD twenty two dash zero one 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 of a seven thousand two hundred square foot parcel. APN zero zero one three seven three zero one zero 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 zero. And a variance BA twenty two dash zero one two two. For a reduction in the minimum substandard lot size. Required is three thousand five hundred square feet and proposed is three thousand forty seven square feet. And a reduction of the rear yard setback required is fourteen feet and proposed will be ten feet. And the application owner is Dorothy Massey. This is an R three six zoning district, medium density residential general plan designation. And it's exempt from sequel requirements for staff report.
Before Christie gets started, this is going to look awfully familiar to you. We had an application on the site a few months ago where the planning commissioner actually denied it, but provided. Some feedback to the applicant and that's what's before you this evening. So I'll let Christie Sabdo go ahead with her presentation.
Thank you. My name is Christie Sabdo, associate planner with the city of Monterey. Presenting two four six Anita, two five one Clay Street, a proposed lot line adjustment. Of a seventy two hundred square foot parcel and a variance. The project is located between Clay and Anita Street. There are two residential houses on that parcel. The general plan designation is medium density residential. The zoning is R three six and it's in the Old Town neighborhood. So just as background, here's a picture of one of the residences. There is a, a house and a garage fronting Clay Street. And on the other side of Anita Street, there is also a house and a garage. And the applicant, the applicant proposes a lot line adjustment of seventy two hundred square foot lot resulting in adjusted lot sizes. One of the lots would be four thousand one hundred and fifty three square feet and the other one would be three thousand forty seven square feet. The proposed lot line adjustment would not meet the R three zoning standards requiring a variance to reduce the minimum. Substandard lot size. The minimum substandard lot size that's required is thirty five hundred square feet and the proposed is three thousand forty seven. So this is looking at kind of a breakdown of the existing parcel size again is seventy two hundred. The two five one Clay Street proposed parcel A would be. Four thousand one hundred and fifty three square feet, which meets the substandard minimum lot size. And the two four six Anita proposed parcel B would be three thousand forty seven. Now, if you look in the R three, it's zoned R three six. Which in a standard lot size would require a minimum of six thousand square feet. Although in the R three district, there's an exception that's allowed. Lots may be subdivided to less than five thousand square feet, but not less than thirty five hundred square feet. Only where development is limited to one single family residence and the creation of a substandard lot does not conflict with an adopted area plan, policy. And programs. So the property is within the Old Town neighborhood, subject to the Old Town area plan. And program one eighteen states. Preserve large and small single family houses located on more than one lot of record. Or large assessor parcels to maintain the mix of large and small lots in the area. Subdivision of larger lots into smaller lots is discouraged. Discourage substandard lot subdivisions, retention of the existing house. And setting by allowing equivalent number of units in cluster development is acceptable. Only if the clustering retains the existing setting and character, that part doesn't apply. So as background, through this lot line adjustment is going to require sanitary sewer easement. You'll see it highlighted in yellow. That easement will be in favor of two four six Anita Street. For access to the sewer line that is. Within the two five one Clay Street lot that will be adjusted. So there are findings that are required for the lot line adjustment and the variance. I'm going to go over the lot line adjustment findings first. The lot line adjustment is between four or fewer existing adjoining parcels. Where the land taken from one parcel is added to an adjoining parcel. And where a greater number of parcels than originally existed is not thereby created. It meets this finding. The proposed lot line adjustment is between one parcel with two existing lots. And a greater number of parcels than originally existed is not created. Lot line adjustment finding two, a local agency or advisory agency shall limit its review and approval to a determination of whether or not parcels resort. Resulting from the lot line adjustment will conform to the local general plan, any applicable specific plan. Any applicable coastal plan, zoning and building ordinances. It meets this finding. The proposed lightline adjustment would conform to the city of Monterey general plan. The property's general plan designation is medium density residential. This designation applies to multifamily residential where the average density is between eight to thirty dwelling units per acre. Proposed lot line adjustment is way under that. Requirements. Continuing with finding two, the proposed lot line adjustment does not meet the R three standards. It does require a variance for a rear yard setback and a substandard minimum lot size. However, the applicant has applied for a variance and the variance findings can be met. Also continuing on with finding two, the proposed lot line adjustment is consistent with the Old Town area plan. The plan discourages subdivision of larger lots into smaller lots and discourages substandard lot subdivisions. However, this proposal does not require a subdivision. It's a lot line adjustment. Existing seventy two hundred square foot parcel already contains two existing lots that just need to be adjusted. Furthermore, under finding two, the proposed adjusted lot would not meet the minimum substandard lot size. However, the block between Anita and Clay Street already contains below standard lot sizes. So you'll see the addresses on this block listed out here and highlighted in a red circle shows the. Substandard lot size is not met for a number of those parcels there. Lot line adjustment finding three. An advisory agency or local agency shall not impose conditions or exactions on its approval of a lot line adjustment. They conform to the local general plan, any applicable coastal plan and zoning and building ordinances to require the prepayment of real property taxes. Prior to the approval of the lot line adjustment or to facilitate the relocation of existing utilities, infrastructure or easements. The proposed lot line adjustment would require a sanitary sewer easement in favor of two four six Anita Street. For access to that sewer line that would cross the adjusted lot at two five one Clay Street. The lot line adjustment exhibit already delineates a proposed sanitary, sanitary sewer line that's part of the project description. Lot line adjustment finding four, no tentative map, parcel map or final map shall be required as a condition to the approval of a lot line adjustment. The applicant has provided lot line adjustment exhibit that, that the city has reviewed. The city is not requiring a tentative map, parcel map or final map as a condition of approval of this lot line adjustment. The lot line adjustment shall be reflected in a deed which shall be recorded. No record of survey shall be required for a lot line adjustment unless required by section eighty seven sixty two of the business and profession. Professions code. That meets this finding, the applicant has provided a lot line adjustment exhibit. The city is not requiring the tentative map, parcel map or final map as a condition of approval. Finding six, a local agency shall approve or disapprove a lot line adjustment pursuant to the permit streamlining act. The lot line adjustment application was deemed complete on November second. And in order to meet the California permit streamlining act, a decision on the application needs to be made within sixty days and. That would need to occur before January first, two thousand and twenty three, and we are meeting today, December thirteenth. So therefore it meets the California permit streamlining act. A variance is required because the proposed lot line adjustment does not meet the R three standards. Two four six Anita Street doesn't meet the minimum substandard lot size and two five one Clay Street does not meet the required fourteen foot rear yard setback. And here are the variance findings that are required. Because of special circumstances or conditions applicable to the subject property. Strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under a. An identical zoning classification. It meets this finding. A strict, strict application of the R three standards, including the thirty five hundred square foot substandard minimum lot size. And fourteen foot minimum rear yard setback would deprive this property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. Under the same zoning classification. On the same block between Anita and Clay Street and within the same zoning, multiple parcels have a lot size under thirty five hundred square feet as I showed earlier. And here again. General variance finding two, that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site. Or to the public health, safety or general welfare, welfare. It meets this finding. Granting the application would not be detrimental or injurious to the property or improvement in the vicinity of the site. Or to the public health, safety or general, general welfare. No improvements are proposed and only a lot line adjustment and variance is proposed. General variance finding three. That granting the application is consistent with the purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege. Inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. Granting this application will not constitute a grant of special privilege. As other properties in the vicinity under the same zoning classification. Of R three have similar or smaller lot sizes. And there are residential setback variance findings that are specific to this application. The first one here is that the variance will not be detrimental, similar or injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity of the. Development site. The variance does meet this, there would be no privacy impacts on adjacent properties as a result of a ten foot rear yard setback. Rather than a fourteen foot rear yard setback. There are no proposed improvements and the sites would remain the same except for a new adjusted lot line between them in the rear. Residential setback finding B or two. That any side yard setback variance for residential structure shall not result in a side yard setback of less than three feet. And any front or rear yard setback variance for residential structure shall not result in a front or rear yard setback of less than ten feet. It meets this finding, the proposed rear setback variance would not result in a rear yard setback of less than ten feet. And residential setback variance finding. It's C. The, the one, you have to meet one of these physical hardships and one of. The one that it meets is the location of existing structures on site. There's a hardship with the, the location of the existing structures on site. The proposed rear yard setback does meet this finding. There would be no physical hardship with the location of existing structures on the site. All existing structures meet the proposed ten foot setback. And finding D is not required. I do list it here, but it's not required. As only finding C or D are required, is required and it meets finding C. Staff recommends approving the lot line adjustment and variance at two four six Anita Street and two five line Clay Street. Staff is available for questions and the advocate does want to speak after that.
Okay, Christie, thank you. Questions for staff? I have one. On the setbacks that are nonconforming. Are there any circumstances where a replacement structure would, would be allowed to build back to the nonconforming setbacks or? Be required to meet the current standards for so setback, like if a house.
So if. Yeah, sorry, should I?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so if the planning commission approves the variance for the ten feet. They'd be required to meet that ten feet. They can't go back and, and meet an existing nonconforming condition.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Page three ninety of the packet, three nine zero. The very last word. Paragraph two F, traverse closure calculations, semicolon, and. And then it ends. And what?
Oh, let me look at the packet here.
Yeah, page three ninety, item page eighteen. Item number seven. Under conditions of approval. In the resolution.
No, I think that was meant to be. And, and at the end of E and then end at F.
So you wanted to get rid of the and in the semicolon and put in a period?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so I guess, thanks Christie. A, this looks more like a subdivision to me. You have a, a large lot and you're chopping it roughly in half.
Right.
You end up with two lots. But there's a definition of lot line adjustment. In the zoning ordinance that makes this actually be a lot line adjustment. Is that?
So we have an on-call land surveyor that reviews applications. This originally started as a minor subdivision. And then he found that there are two existing lots. So really it's just a lot line adjustment.
Oh, because and he's going right along the existing lot line.
So the, yeah, there's two adjacent lots with one that sort of goes down through the middle of the houses. What they're saying is by turning it perpendicular, it's just moving the lot lines. And so we did have that peer reviewed by our city attorney's office as well because I thought it was a subdivision. It sort of looked like a subdivision and I guess that original lot line still exists under.
But that's using the old sort of term of lot. It's it's not the parcel line, it's actually the old.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the assessor parcel lines, it's the original lots that exist under these properties. And I thought it was a subdivision, I thought those lines would have been extinguished, but they haven't. And so it became a lot line adjustment. And we did have Christie mentioned was the surveyor that first brought that to our attention with the title reports. And then. And then we actually had it peer reviewed by our legal counsel and say, are we really looking at this correctly? And the answer.
That's some fancy footwork, actually.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I think we can open this up to public comment and the owner, you said.
Should we let the applicant speak next?
Yes.
The applicant is on the line. Dorothy. Should be able to unmute. And there will still be a three minute timer.
So Dorothy. To speak, yes, thank you, we can hear you.
Oh, hello, good evening. Um, thank you. First, I want I want to thank the staff for their hard work on this. It's been ongoing and a little arduous at times. And also I agree, it was some fancy footwork and I couldn't be happier. I just want to say that this lot line adjustment will serve to enhance the existing setting and character of the neighborhood by creating two single family properties. Each property will be more affordable to the average family. And when a family can own their own home, it instills pride of ownership and owner occupied properties are usually better maintained by their owners and cared for in a fashion. That is consistent with the objectives of the area plan, creating neighborhood stability and increasing property values in the neighborhood. Resulting in higher tax revenues as the property is currently recording, recorded, it's unaffordable for the average family. And will continue to be held in this investment property leased to nonpermanent residents. I started this process because one of my renters actually wants to buy one of the houses. And there was no way for them to do that, you know, as as two homes on on one parcel. And. And that's why I hope we can do this, so. That's that's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else and.
That was the only applicant we have online. But there are attendees. So just a reminder to provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. No hands are going up. Online or in person.
Okay, well, close the public moment and take it back to commissioners for consideration. Motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the item as submitted. I I think the staff really deserves credit for some very creative thinking, especially getting the city attorneys. Back up on it gives me some confidence that this fancy footwork is legitimate way of. Working with the applicant and. You know, giving us like firm findings to make in this case. So I moved to approve the item as submitted.
Thank you, we have a motion, can I have a second?
With the findings. And the amendment.
Yeah, oh, that's that's true, with the findings, I I assume the the sewer easement is a condition. Okay.
The findings and conditions, yeah.
Yeah, finding and conditions.
Second.
There you go, a motion and a second, any further consideration or discussion?
I just want to say that I'm so happy for Mrs. Massey to come back and to pursue this after she came in the first time. And the lot division was these cockamamie lines all over the the place that would have resulted in trouble every time they tried to do something on the property line. This is a clean solution to a problem and now it's a win-win for everybody.
Great, a longer problem.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's okay, we can have a roll call vote.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Unmute yourself, Mike.
And I, and yes.
I said, yes, the other year.
Okay, both mics are a. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Okay, this motion carries and it is appealable to the the city council with forms found at the planning office in the next ten days.
Okay, last item on our agenda, a public consideration. Planning commission consideration is item number eight, which is consider twenty five hundred Garden Road use permit. Repeat dash twenty two dash zero one two four. To allow modifications to an existing T-Mobile USA Incorporated personal wireless facility. On an existing church building, the applicant is. Andrea boy Rascop. On CBR Group Incorporated. On behalf of T-Mobile USA Incorporated, the owner of Shoreline Community Church in Monterey Peninsula. This is industrial zoning district, industrial general plan, land use designation and is exempt from CEQA. Jack for.
We have our consultant Jerry Hiddleman, that's I see he's online, Jerry, can you unmute yourself? There you are, thank you.
Hello, commissioners, chair and commissioners. Thank you, let me share my screen, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Can everyone see the screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, well, thank you, this as stated is modification of an existing. Wireless facility at twenty five hundred Garden Road, it's right down the road from twenty two hundred Garden Road where we had another project, just I think a month or two ago. Of course, here's Garden Road and can't see it, but the airport is to the north. And this is used as a church building, I believe there's preschool on the ground floor. The project is retention of three existing panel antennas, replacement of three. Antennas installation of some three new remote radio units and modification of ground level support equipment. And this is an upgrade of the facility from a fourth G to a five G facility. And as as the chair stated, this is the Shoreline Community Church. Applicant is Andrea Kohatsu Rascop. And T-Mobile facility and we're in the industrial zoning and general plan designation. Now, as you've seen in the past, this proposal considered an eligible facility under section sixty four oh nine of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. Two thousand twelve. Stated as an existing facility, there's not a substantial change per this FCC definition. The shot clock is sixty days, but we're in pretty good shape, this the shot clock would end January twenty third of actually. Twenty three, so that would be twenty twenty three. Sorry about that mistake.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, I just noticed myself.
Give or take a year.
So here's, here's the building, Garden Road is up here. There's, as you can, I'll show you in an aerial view, there's some panel antennas on this little. I think it's a stairwell injection out from the building. And then there's, and they're on the side of the building and then there's some. Antennas up on the roof and they're all enclosed within a screen. F what's known as an FRP screen. I think this view shows it fairly well. Here's the side of the building, I think this is a stairwell over here and there's actually. You pet two panel antennas on the building beside here, two over here. And then there's some antennas on the roof over in this area. So here's, as you can see on the left, existing and then proposed. So they have two antennas on that little stairwell over here, they're just, they're going to leave this one in this location, but. Replace this one with a new antenna and a new FRP screen around it. Also, the one, this is the antenna enclosure on the roof. And you can see that they're going to leave one of. The antennas, but replace it over here with a new antenna. And then same thing on the building facade in this location. Leave an existing antenna but replace with a new antenna, so it would be three new antennas. The equipment layout, they're really not changing this at all, putting some new equipment just in. This area and this is on the ground level adjacent to the building, contains no antennas. Here's a building facades. And here's the existing, again, you can see the antennas on that little outcropping in the building here, here. And they're only replacing this one and one over here and then one antenna in this little enclosure on the roof. So here's an existing view looking east, they're sorry about that, looks like it's blocked a little bit by a tree, but I showed you the aerial before that shows it a little bit better. And then they're proposing to put a new antenna here and a new antenna there on this side of the building. And here's the roof. Once this is done, it'll look exactly the same as. What you see out there today, so. Just a new antenna inside that little enclosure on the roof. Here's another view of that from the northwest. In another view. So we had the radio frequency study and the results of that show that the general public exposure limits will not be exceeded at ground level. At the building or at any adjacent properties. And you'll see we have a horizontal view that shows that the arrays from the RF actually stay above the roof level. And project out from the building, so. There are no multi-story elevated structures within two hundred feet of the RF array. And from the replacement antennas, as I stated before, there is a ground floor preschool, but that's significantly below. The our public RF safety zone, as I'll show you in a subsequent figure. So here's the arrays going out in this direction, this direction and over here from the. Rooftop equipment, we had the horizontal view and this shows that the antenna that's closest to the roof level. This is the public limit, so. It would be a hazard for people working on the roof, but there's no RF exposure inside the building. And and again, the preschool is at this level down below. So we did, as you, as you're familiar with, put a number of RF conditions on the project. And of course, compliance with FCC and other federal and state regulations. Like see a post-construction RF report would be required to prove that. The RF study was correct. Personnel on the roof, she'll have training. Can have access to areas near it in front of the antennas only with that, but you typically they're turned off when they do have access to the roof. And the wireless carrier's contact information shall be at the access points to the rooftop areas. And also to have the blue and yellow caution signage replaced adjacent to all active antenna areas. So with that, staff is recommending that you approve a permanent memo UP twenty two oh one two with recommended findings and conditions of approval. And. I'm available to answer questions, I know the applicant is here to answer your questions and I believe the applicant's RF engineer is also available. With any questions that might come up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, any questions for Jerry?
So is this equipment, you know, five G?
Yes, this will be an upgrade from four G to five G.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we see if the applicant would like to speak?
Yes, they have their hand up already. Andrea or Andrea. Should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Andrea Kohatu Rascop, I'm from the CBR Group. I would like to thank the planners and staff, Kim Cole, Angela Burclary for working so diligently on our project. And to Jerry Hiddleman for providing an excellent staff report for our proposed project. And joining me for tonight's hearing is Mark Peters, the executive vice president of the CBR Group. And Wade Hojed and Dr. Gerald Bushberg from Soteria RF Safety Consultants who can help address any EME questions or concerns. And if there are any other additional questions about the project, Mark or myself will be happy to answer them. As Jerry correctly stated, we are retaining three existing antennas and replacing three existing antennas for three new antennas. So there is no net increase of antennas and there is no net increase to radios. Like I said, if there are any questions that we can help answer. We are here.
Thank you, commissioner's question for the applicant.
I have a couple. Ma'am, the. Illustrations that we saw show from the top down, it looks like a green balloon. I understand those antennas are directional and so it's not the circumference, it's it's basically. A much thinner version of a balloon. And it shows, I saw your. The dimensions going out from the transmitter, but I don't show. A dimension of how high they are from the to the bottom of that danger area and to the top of that danger area. Could you tell me those figures?
I would defer to either Wade or Dr. Bushberg who should be. Part of the Zoom meeting if they can get unmuted.
There are a few attendees who you mentioned, so if one of them has the answer, if you could just raise your hand, so I know which one to unmute. That would be appreciated. All right, Wade. You should be able to unmute and discuss with the planning commission.
So the the energy is. That the height of it is is pretty much from the center of the antenna to the top and bottom of the antenna. And expands, as Jerry showed it, fourteen feet for occupational in front of the antenna and you have to be really facing middle of the antenna. That's where most of the energy is coming out of the antenna.
I understand that, but the illustration shows two different colors and I assume one was a danger area and the other one was less dangerous.
Well, what the the yellow one is for occupational. And then the blue is for the general public. So if you are facing directly facing the antenna, general public, so you shouldn't get close to within thirty one feet from the front of the antenna. And then for occupational and these are people who know what they're doing and they're they're aware of the. The risk, then they shouldn't get closer than fourteen feet from from front of the antenna.
Yeah, that's why, but from the top of that roof, from that roof to the the bottom of that danger area, how many feet is that?
That's, what does it say, I think, I believe that. That's, what does it say? I think I believe that's about five feet from the center of the antenna to the to the roof. To the to the walk-in area of the roof. It's about five feet, I believe.
And the 31 foot represents what?
Though this is in front of, this is horizontally right in front of the antenna.
I understand, but what is the 31?
So so this is the distance from the from the front of the antenna. You shouldn't be getting closer to the antenna. Less than 31 feet. So if you're in front of the antenna, you should keep a distance of 31 feet from the front of the antenna.
I understand that. But what is the represent?
I'm sorry?
But what does the 31 feet represent?
I think Commissioner Brassfield, and you can clarify, I think that's the public exposure area.
That's right.
There's two different exposure areas. The green would be the occupational health, safety area, and then the public exposure area. So there's different safety requirements in the 14 feet versus the 31 and they're both danger areas, but it's just different.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are more hands going up. Cheryl Buschberg, is that one of the applicants?
Yes, he is one of our RF experts.
Okay, he seems like he has something to answer here. So Cheryl, if you could unmute.
Yeah, I was just trying to help answer that question. That's exactly what it is. Distance to the public MPE grain is the distance to the occupational MPE.
What I was trying to clarify was that when you look down at those, there were green balloons. Okay, that wasn't it didn't define, it showed a blue, but it didn't show. And it looks a lot different in distance than the other illustration. That's what I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
Right. Then the differences are the one you're showing now is per person standing on the roof. And the other one is at the level of the antenna, which would be higher. So the the one that's the most applicable is the one you're showing now, which demonstrates the areas that exceed the public MPE for which appropriate signage and barriers have been described in the report.
Yeah, because I was looking at those illustrations and the green is and this illustration goes a lot further than the other illustration, but
That's right, because it was just demonstrating the 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 difference. This is looking at the, well, the green is five to 100%. And the other, the other figure was just showing to where 100% is not the entire five to 100% level. That's why there's a difference in length.
I'm just trying to understand if my eyes are seeing correctly. Thank you.
Oh, you're seeing it correct.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, is there anyone from the general public that would like?
There is. I do see one hand raised so far.
Three minutes.
What was that?
Three minutes on the
Yes, there will be a timer and just in case there's anyone else who needs a reminder about how to join a Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, you can use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Join by telephone dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. To provide a public comment, once you're in Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen to provide comments by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And again, there will be a three minute time limit.
Thank you.
Oh. I think they just got disconnected. I don't see them in there anymore.
Let's give it a minute. They had their hand raised, did they?
They did have their hand raised and that was a caller who who joined specifically just for this item, I believe.
Give it a minute or so to see if they reconnect.
Sure. Just a reminder, you can join by telephone by dialing 833-568-8864, toll-free. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. I mean, did have a commentary. Oh, and they're back. The last three phone number digits, 902. You can unmute by pressing star six.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. The Zoom connection is having trouble tonight. It's locked me out three times now. This application is incomplete and for that reason it should be denied. There is no cumulative exposure, which is required by our code. There's no mention of other facilities in the area and this is a quiet high RF areas was mentioned. There's a large cell tower at 2200 as well as other facilities. There are no figures also for radiation through the back of the antennas into the building, through the roof into the building, through the windows and the walls, including into the preschool below. There are no FCC standards. There are only guidelines and the FCC lost a lawsuit last year over its RF limits and why it's currently, everything's been remanded back to the FCC and there's been no response yet from the FCC as to why they didn't revise their limits. There's also no policing by FCC of levels. There's no guarantee that this modeling is accurate. The there are no not, these aren't real world conditions and it seems like the the people, the consultants haven't haven't even visited the site. In the year 2000, T-Mobile requested that the Ecolog Institute conduct a review of scientific literature on the health impacts from RF radiation. And they came up with the report. As a result of it, the recommendations of the Ecolog Institute was that a precautionary is level be adopted that's a thousand times lower than FCC limits. And they had extensive results from the the research of of harm from this radiation. The word safe by the RF consultant misrepresents FCC limits. And the person is only qualified to talk about compliance. It puts more radiation on Highway 68, which I cannot travel now. It's an access barrier to me as a disabled person who's disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity. I won't be able to visit fishermen's flats or garden road businesses due to the high levels. So it blocks my access. Also, there's no mention of interference with radar altimeters. The FAA and FCC are currently fighting over this. The airport is not only in proximity to these antennas, but the north sector antenna directly faces the airport. So this is a public safety issue. There I I keep seeing in these reports that they believe there are marketing of the red lines that are in the T-Mobile ads showing radiation high above people never touching any phones or bodies. It's completely contrary to how if we believe their marketing, the phones would have no connection at all. These go into the buildings, they go into the bodies. These speakers are like speakers. This is frequency, like sound frequency. The speakers will radiate, the the antennas will radiate this radiation everywhere. I sent you pictures. I don't know if you got them. There's a preschool on site and there was no photo sim of the north sector, except very far away, which is fairly typical with these photo sims. That's dishonest. It doesn't show you the yard where the children play and the speaker or the antenna right above them radiating into their yard at 100 times the Ecolog recommendation for exposure as a precautionary level. FCC limits are only thermal. They're for a man, a large man. They're not for children. And I ask you to deny this because of the application being incomplete and all these issues.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I see no more hands raised online or in person.
Then we'll bring it back to commissioners for consideration.
If you read the staff report, this is an eligible facilities request. Not substantially changing the physical dimensions of the wireless facility. And under federal law, Monterey must approve and cannot deny the request.
Kim, can you speak to the completeness of the application? Obviously, the staff deemed the application complete at some point.
We did deem the application complete. The application includes both vertical and horizontal displays of the RF emissions from the site. It shows that the the preschool is, it's at the ground level and the RF exposure areas are on the roof and up above the structure. So we disagree with the conclusion that the windows roof or the back of the building are exposed as far as the roof will be, and we showed that, but not the back of the building or the windows. So we believe that it's in compliance.
As far as the completeness of the application, she said that there were requirements for vicinity, you know, to show this other facilities in the vicinity. Is that the case?
So they're they're required in the RF report to consider the cumulative impact of RF emissions in the area. And their report did not, you know, we we know the 2200 Garden Road is further down and it's not showing any cumulative impacts on the site.
Okay, so you addressed that and it was
We believe it to be in compliance with our seminal requirements. In regards to the radio altimeters with the airport, we have sent our ordinance to the Airport Land Use Commission. You probably remember that that was part of your debate over the last five public hearings at the end of 2022. And the ALUC has requested that all applications, the applicants are required to fill out a form that goes to the FAA to allow them to comment on the facility or have any specific requirements and that has to now be submitted before issuance of building permit. So there are questions regarding radio altimeters, but the ALUC is asking the FAA to specifically evaluate that for compliance.
Okay, thank you. Can I get the motion?
I move to approve 2500 Garden Road Use Permit, UP 22-0124 to allow modifications to an existing T-Mobile USA Personal Wireless Facility on an existing church building applicant Andrea Kohatzu Rascop.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Are we looking for a second?
Yep, we sure are.
Second.
Is that a second? Yes. Okay, there we go.
I think that was
From our from our online commissioner group. Okay, so we have a motion in a second and let's do a local base.
Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milic?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latessa?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion carries. The project is approved as submitted and it is appealable to the city council with forms found at the planning commission within the next two, two days or three days. Three days for wireless wireless applications.
Okay, thank you. And just to step back for a second, the question on Nina's comment about the issues with Zoom. How how is that maintained here? Is there ever a checkup or diagnostic?
We get notified and we we also go in to check Zoom and sporadically for updates whenever, you know, there's a lot of boards and commissions. We all use Zoom for these meetings. They're they're currently all being offered in hybrid format. So between our office, the council, the city office and all of the other boards like library, parks and rec, NCIP, and between all of us, we we make sure to communicate if there ever is an update. And we also check manually for updates. If there is an issue with connectivity, that's why we offer the option to join by phone as well as online.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Next item, Commissioner's comments.
I will like to add one thing. There is always more than one phone number listed on the agenda. That's on iSearchMonterey.org. So if that first phone number does not work the best, it could be recommended to try one of the other ones that are listed.
Okay, thank you. Back to Commissioner's comments. Are there any? Oh, yes. Mike.
I want to I want to recommend highly the the annual commissions and 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 what the committees, the party that we had a week ago at the at the fronty room. It was good food, a lot of, a lot of people we know. And it was a was a thoroughly pleasant outing.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes.
We keep coming to a lot of these issues regarding side yards, backyard, front yards and the how they came about. I recall I think I was 13 or 14. I asked my grandmother who had gone through that because the state required they move their local home. And she explained to me that back in the late twenties, a lot of cities were requiring that you not hang your laundry in the front yard. And that's why they had bigger backyards and smaller side yards. In some cities, they allowed you to have your laundry on the side yards, but people wanted to put out a lot of laundry, so they made bigger backyards. And I think that's part of what we are seeing here, particularly in the older neighborhoods. And so when tonight, when we talked about the redrawing the line in the backyard, it just brought that that thought up that maybe we are changing and now we're putting ADUs in those backyards. Those big backyards. So it's kind of funny to how things develop. And I'll be interested to see how it looks in 50 years.
Yeah.
Sandy, do you still hear me pretty well tonight?
I heard you perfectly tonight, Mike.
Thank you.
How are we doing on our missing planning commissioner?
Steve Milic has a comment. He wants to tell everybody that Croatia lost the soccer game.
Yes, Steve.
I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy and safe holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
A ditto.
You're almost welcome. You're wonderful.
I do have just a few brief comments. First of all, thank you for your service to the city of Monterey. We spend a lot of late nights together and we truly value your input and decisions and you carry a heavy workload. And I think you know how much the public appreciates having a board that they can go to and represent their opinions too. And sometimes that's tough, mediating issues between neighbors. But I think it's critical to our community and moving forward. So thank you for all your service. Just a brief highlight of what's coming up in January and February, just a heads up. On January 17th in the evening session, right now, the city council evening session is slated for the wireless ordinance. I'm going to have several new council members. So at least two brand new ones. And so we are going to spend some time giving some background because they're not going to have the experience that you have. Debating these periodically. On February 21st, I mentioned we're trying to have a joint planning commission and council meeting. I will send out calendar reminders tomorrow, hopefully for you. We haven't had a joint PC and council meeting in years, so we thought the housing element was an important enough one to try to do that. And then lastly, as you can tell, we've been pushing really hard on ADUs, SB 35, getting the housing elements started. But we also need to pick up next SB 9. So after Fernanda finishes SB 35 and ADUs, we're creating checklists for SB 9. We have two people currently looking at SB 9 as a possibility in our people currently looking at SB 9 as a possibility in our city for two lots. And so we're learning a lot because the, as you know, reading the legislation is fairly thick and seems to be, you know, where was that comma placed? What does it really mean in this context? And so we're getting, we're, we're learning a lot as we're reviewing these first two applications. But we would like to get our own guidelines and ordinances adopted to reflect SB 9.
How about it? That you have a budget for outside consultants to help you with these things.
Yes, we are able to hire outside. It's really become a necessity with the housing laws to have a, an attorney that just specializes in housing. And while we get it, I think about 90% correct. They help us with that other 10%.
Great. Anything else? Okay, good evening, everybody. This session is adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.